All right, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, August 6th, 2019. Is there anyone here who has something to speak about that is not on the agenda? All right. Oh. Oh. That was close. We never get public speak.
Good save.
Please say something.
All right. Quickly, we've got some planning board minutes for Tuesday, July 9th. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
I had no modifications. I motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, July 9th.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining. All right. And then we have Tuesday, June 18th. It looks like Mr. Cockshaw was not present for that one, but...
I was the one who wasn't present. I had no modifications. I motion to approve the minutes from the 18th.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining is Chris. All right, moving right along, we have a couple A&amp;Rs. First up is Daniel Hayes, DBA ESP Auto. Is there someone here for that A&amp;R?
Yes.
Come on up real quick and just walk us through it, please.
We just had two lots. We're combining into one, looking at opportunities for possible expansion in the back of the building.
Okay. Uh...
These are the two maps that came in at the last meeting.
Yeah, these are the photos we got here.
About this? Yeah, it just came in. So here it is, the one that says Pleasant Street.
Yep.
And I see two lots. Can you come over here, please?
Sure.
The front side.
Oh.
You just went behind the counter.
That's cool. I like that.
So show us what's going on.
Yep. So we have one business that's in two buildings and a lot that's divided into two. We had originally purchased one, purchased one later on, and now we're looking to combine the two in the event that we were able to add an addition. I'm sorry, is this Pleasant Street?
This is Pleasant Street.
It's the reverse, add an addition to this side going back.
So you're trying to merge the two lots?
Correct.
What is this property over here on this side?
That's the church, Notre Dame Church.
Okay. So this is the frontage for the whole property? There's no roads anywhere else?
Correct.
So this property had the frontage of, and I can't see what that is, but it's not a lot of distance there, right?
20 feet?
Correct.
That's interesting, huh? Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yeah.
So this is an improvement because it makes the whole thing have enough space?
Right.
I'm in favor of it.
Jeff, any comments, questions from the planning department?
No.
I motion to endorse the...
Hold on one second. Anybody else got any, how many comments or questions about this A&amp;R? Excellent.
I continue to motion to endorse the Daniel Hayes DBA ESP Auto A&amp;R for 15 and 17 Pleasant Street.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining. Thank you.
You want to sign those?
Together and then just resigning?
Yeah, let's do that.
Does he need them? Maybe he...
Do you want to, sir, do you want to stay for the signed copies? I think you're going to need a moment. We've got one more A&amp;R and then I'll sign a thousand copies. All right, next up, I don't have the actual address on the amended agenda here, Jeff.
Drury Lane.
Drury Lane.
I don't see a number.
There's no number on this. Is it on the actual?
There's an amended agenda that didn't... It was just up on the screen. I think you have it.
I don't think the address is listed on here.
All right, Dennis and Cheryl Campbell?
Sure they can tell us the address?
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Campbell and this is my husband Dennis, and I'm the daughter of Samuel Fushoni. My dad passed away last fall and my sister, my sister and I are going to put the house, his house, on the market, but before we do that, our house is 23 Drury Lane and my father's 27 and the line in between, we'd like to extend it by 1,100 square feet.
Is 23 on the right of that picture or the left?
He's on the left.
23 is on the left and 27 is on the right?
That building would be ours. Her father's house is straddling the town line, or the city line, I should say, but North Hampton.
You said you want to move it 11 feet?
1,100 feet.
1,100 feet.
1,100 feet to create more of a buffer between...
Well, 11,000 square feet, it looks like, yeah.
It's 85 square. It's 85.
Yeah. So is it, it's just moving the parcel, the thing that's parcel A on here is just, right now it's a part of the house on the...
Right now, he sold us 0.8 acres and we built a house in 2014 and we just want to extend it by 11,000 square feet.
Okay.
Are you understanding that? There's a line in the middle. Is it moving left or right?
It's moving right.
So the parcel A is becoming smaller?
No. Parcel A is getting attached to the...
Parcel A is getting removed from the parcel on the left and getting moved to the parcel on the right.
Okay, it is the part that's being moved.
Yeah, it's the part that's switching. Okay.
That puts it in progress.
I think that's the opposite. I think it's coming off of the parcel to the right and being added to their parcel.
Correct.
Oh, you own the one on the left?
Yes.
Understood, okay.
We own the one on the left and my sister and I actually own my dad's property anyway.
Yep.
So you're just expanding it.
Just moving that line over.
It's the old one before we sell the house.
Okay.
And there's plenty of square feet for both lots remaining on Drury Lane.
Yep, frontage is fine.
For frontage.
Any other comments or questions from the board, planning department? Anybody else have any comments or questions? All right.
I motion to endorse the A&amp;R for 23 and 27 Drury Lane.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstaining. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will start signing those plans for you. In the meantime, we could have a, we've got a public hearing for Harnish Patel for existing plan approval modification under section 7.4. Somebody for that that can come up?
He can still hear you.
Yeah, I can hear you, that's all right.
Go ahead.
I was just looking.
Okay.
Would you like me to pull the site plan and start?
Yes. So, my name's Terry Reynolds. I'm here, Terry Reynolds, engineer and representative for Patel. He owns Jim's Package Store along with the adjacent parcel, which is currently an automobile repair shop. And we've been here previously and had previously approved a similar product, you know, pretty much the same project, which is basically originally, it was a couple retail spaces in front with, I think we gained one unit, I think it was 18 single-bedroom units before. So now we're coming back because the modification I'd like to do is we'd like to combine the retail space, so there's going to be approximately a 3800 square foot, 38 plus 8 square foot, one single retail space, 19 residential units, but we continue to have four, four whole units in the building also. The changes that are happening, Jeff, could you go to the layout? Which is the next one.
That's one more unit than you had before, is that correct?
Yes. And so what we're doing now is basically we've revamped the front of the building with a walkway, an internal walkway, and then we've put more of a streetscape through it, so the sidewalks are getting widened to eight feet, and then there are tree planters being installed along the edges of the roadway along with bicycle racks in front. We've provided for a little better pedestrian access, I believe. Originally, before we had pedestrian access going from the west side, the larger parking lot area, going through the building to get to the smaller parking lot. Now we have a ramp, a ramp on the rear of the building along with the sidewalk across the front and the internal walkway also in the front. We continue to provide three spaces of handicap parking. We are meeting the parking requirements, I believe, at 33 spaces, 33 required. And basically, you know, we haven't changed much in terms of the parking arrangements aside from pedestrian access, which is better at this point. It continues to meet stormwater requirements through the city. We are asking for a stormwater permit, or actually a new stormwater permit, we already finished one before. And as I said, the lighting is basically the same. We have cut off 14-foot lighting in the parking lot areas. There are outside of the, on the building, the sconce lighting, downward lighting. So that's pretty much it. Stormwater system, I guess, as I said, is the same as before. There, there's a defunct infiltration basin in the existing Jim's parking lot. It hasn't been working for quite a while. We're going to revamp that and put it in a functional system. The entire stormwater system will connect both into Cottage Street and to Adams Street. And we will be basically reducing the overall flows going into the municipal storm sewer along with adding two water quality units prior to any water leaving the site.
Do you mind if I throw in a question?
Please.
So I just want to call out some changes just to help put it in perspective, and it's been a while, so a little bit of reminder doesn't hurt too. In terms of the overall footprint, it looks to me like you really haven't expanded too much. It's really kind of up. Is that, am I wrong or right about that?
Yeah, the difference is that with, with creating the streetscape kind of, you might say, and the internal walkway, we did create a little more impervious in the front. We're filling in what was an open corner there a little more than before. So we, you know, in redoing the stormwater couch, we evaluated that, making sure that we're still good.
Okay.
But in general, it's a similar size, pretty much the same size building. There's some tweaks here and there.
And then you said you're merging it to one retail space on the bottom.
Yes.
Is that intended to be Jim's?
It's intended to be Jim's. It is set up so if they want in the future, they can divide it and other retail space can be created. Right now, Jim's access is going to be where it is in the rear with the parking lot. And, but it is set up so that if they want to divide it in the future and have a separate retail, you can have retail coming out the front and that's what that internal walkway will allow for.
So you'll have a walkway with what looks like retail space, but you can't access it from the street?
You can't access Jim's. It will be an emergency access, but it will be the access for the apartments also.
Why is that?
For security purposes, they, you can talk to that more.
Because you don't want to park on that side, like an apartment side, so they come on the other side and parking cars and they're coming inside because they don't want to be people driving by and getting accident on that corner. That's the purpose, we are just putting on access on the other side.
So, so parking for Jim's needs to be pretty much traditionally where it is currently, is what your intention is?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there, there really isn't good on-street parking in front. It's fire lane out there.
But it does, it does sort of, that would be easier for sort of foot traffic, right? If you weren't driving to be able to come on that side?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll toss something out here and I'm just going to open with it. We have a big process underway right now in this city to improve that whole section of town. I know that there's some new sidewalk changes coming. I think there was a note in there, I'm sure you'll read at some point, about making sure that the sidewalks that you're proposing match and meet with the other sidewalks. But I think it's more than that. At this particular time in our community, it's imperative, I think, for us as a city that, that we do a great job of making this downtown Cottage Street especially aesthetically magnificent. And I love that you've come back improving it, but I think it's, it's important for us to, to question that. Are you the one that made these designs? Are you the one that put them together?
No, it's Board of Architects.
Now normally the planning board wouldn't get into aesthetics too much, but in this case, it's in a smart growth district and it has a lot of relevance to, you know, to the processes that are going on, and that gives us a little bit of leeway and leverage to discuss it. So I want to just let you know that that's definitely something in this process I want to discuss.
Do you would like Ed to come up? He can talk to the aspects of the building.
And could I ask for, I think, when you're talking about the building, I think there's an element of change that if you're looking at the front, the brick, the three-story brick portion appears like it went larger and so, and I do have access and I provided the planning board with the previously approved plan, so that, the, the Jim's Package Store, the one-story building in the previous iteration was a little bit larger, and so the brick building kind of came over towards that building a little bit more. So in terms of just talking through the changes, the brick portion got a little bit larger, seems like in this iteration.
So to back up just a little bit, the, from the very inception, from the inception of this project, sort of the key architectural design challenge that we faced was being able to create this new development on this site that would also incorporate the existing store and also be built in such a way that the store could continue to operate through most of the construction process. So the reason why there's these two different architectural treatments for these two different parts of the building are essentially because of that. What you see here is the result of a lot of consideration and compromise to try to get that to work and yet provide a, what I believe to be the type of kind of new urbanist-type mixed-use development that I think East Hampton is hoping to develop more of on Cottage Street or at least insofar as to continue what's currently there. So, let's see. The most significant part about adapting the smart growth zoning rules, we did manage to get to net back one apartment, which is whatever, but we were able to eliminate the front yard setback requirement, which was that let us bring the new building front. It allowed us to take this urban mixed-use type facade and spread it wider than the small lot we had, the land we had allotted for the building previously. You know, functionally, the non-ideal part is that we have what's still a town-type storefront that current, that in the near future is planned to serve the existing use, which is not very street-oriented. But again, as a major, you know, compromise towards creating the type of development you want to see, we designed the front and the space inside so that it can easily be reconfigurable as the uses change in the future. I think the main idea we want to feel step back from the current, we, we, the intention is very much to look into the future and to think of the long-term life of that, of that area and the resources we can hopefully contribute.
Okay.
Jeff, want to add?
Yeah. The storefront that's being used, it is set up with windows, they're opaque windows, so it will have the feeling of storefront there to some extent.
We haven't specified anything. I'm thinking films, translucent films that will allow the liquor store to maintain their privacy requirements as well as their lighting requirements and still give at least a few cents of storefront blazing.
That's on the side facing Cottage Street. You're talking about the new windows?
It's not actually a storefront though, it's the store back.
Right.
Yeah, onto Cottage Street.
Yeah, architecture's funny that way.
Well, yeah. Or it doesn't have to be.
Jeff, yeah?
Just while the architect is up there, do you want, will you run through the, the plans and describe the building and the materials a little bit and, and I can help you, but do you want to start with the floor plan and go through and then go to...
Is it on our derby though, really? I mean, it's, we can look at it, it's in there.
And I think this is the opportunity to present it in terms of what is shown on these plans.
Well, so, yeah, we are in keeping with the urban architecture style, if you will use that word. Yeah, we are showing a brick veneer front. The brick that we're planning on is a similar type of color and pattern to what's on the existing store, which pops up in various other places around, more or less. In the pre, if you, if anybody recalls the previous approved version, we did plan for a three-story tall worth of brick veneer across the broad west side that you see on the lower elevation in the drawing there. We decided to pare that back in the interest of lightening some structural, of decreasing some of the structural demands in the back to still absolute, you know, within full compliance for commercial type 5B architecture, but this, this way we don't have to, yeah, it basically is a degree of value engineering. But we believe we have it up at the front where we think it is most architecturally And then the rest, you know, commercial siding, I show horizontal siding with a sort of a vertical accent above the upper course of windows. That's what we're moving forward with.
I'm trying to slide down to the... So this is the parking lot view, so this is looking east? This would be if you're standing in the driveway?
Correct. If you're driving east on Cottage Street, this is the broad face you'll kind of see coming that direction. You see in white are surfaces of the existing store that are not being altered. We might do, I mean, probably will do re-roofing, I haven't got that far. But all the other rendered, the surfaces you see with patterns are new surfaces, same brick and siding type theme, not a lot of fuss as far as that Park Street, Park, Harvey Lot there.
Adams Road.
But we believe that's appropriate with the current situation. Here's a render that shows you close to the coloration we're thinking about. We got our certain accent color, the, you know, green.
Zoom in just a little bit on that, please, Jeff.
Yeah, I was trying to...
There you go. It works.
These are somewhat preliminary as far as they don't show lighting or signage necessarily. We have that on other drawings, but as far as the materials go, this is, do we have to cuss or something? Yeah, it's, again, it's old, but it is currently what we're proposing for materials.
So this, this image shows where you did provide the pedestrian access into the archway from the street?
Yeah, that's all, that's all current as of our partial conversation or whatever. Or that is the thing I have up here. Yep. So there'd be a 1 to 20 grade sloping sidewalk that's going to take us from the public sidewalk up until the covered, what do you want to call it? Covered area in the front of the building there. So we have, that's, so not, so is that accessible without requiring handrails? If we can make that planter either 36 inches wide or if we can get the tallest part off the ground at 30 inches or less and we don't need any barrier, I think we can do that. I didn't, yeah, we'll work where's Brooklyn Avenue.
And so that, that entrance on that Maple Cottage side there, that, that's an emergency exit for the package store and then did you say it was access?
It's approached in that way, yes.
There's also access to the apartments there, is that right? It looks like it gets into a stairwell?
Because certainly have key access, no, no reason why we couldn't do that.
But so that door will be locked, at least from the outside?
There will be no accessible doors to members of the public on that, on that side.
Okay.
I have like this little problem with this, and it's that looking at it on paper, I love it, smart growth, apartments, you know, real space for the business, first floor, but then great storefront. It all looks great on paper, but when I actually look at the design, the issue that I have is the part that's actually facing the street is the homes, not the business.
Yeah.
And that's a big disconnect from kind of what I think we want in the city. Everything else about this I love, honestly. So this is, that makes it really tough for me that, I'm battling with that, that I, that I really want to see storefront business on the front. The residence is hidden, you know, or in the back. I don't mind having the parking on the side, whatever, but in terms of the aesthetic of what it means to our community in this critical area walking by, it's tough for me to think that there's now going to be this big section there that's just not for business.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more.
Our major, I think one of our major motivations to convert the business uses away from new tenants was an observation that there was no scarcity of new commercial spaces around unless it wasn't a particularly good use for the space. I understand what you're talking about and again, this is, you know...
Is there any storefronts right now opening downtown East Hampton? I don't even, I can't even think of one downtown opening storefront right now.
No.
Well, also, I mean, I don't know that it necessarily has to be the two retail units to still have access on that street front, right? I mean, you could still use it as Jim's but have access from that side.
Yeah, and relocate your point of entry, your point of sale to the front. Now you have a register near the front, you've got access into the front, now you actually have a storefront. It's not, it's not that hard for an, from an architecture point of view to make that a storefront.
And you've sort of done, we've already done a, because you've sort of built it, the proposal has an outward design that sort of mimics an actual storefront, like you wouldn't actually have to change anything from that point of the design, I don't think.
Yeah.
I mean, is that something that's feasible?
Well, so...
We're going to open up, in a minute.
I already gave you the line, so.
Oh.
Is he part of your team?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yard detective record. We've been working on this project since 2012. Okay? And this building has grown in shape and size. Basically, the building is the same, but then because they are into business of having a package store, their requirement, and it is their money, they are taking over a business that's totally the first floor. So it's still a business, okay? It's not that it's not a business.
No.
With residential or whatever. You know, we're trying to come up here with a compromise to keep the client happy and to keep the, you know, the city happy, and we're dealing with a three-foot grade drop there too. So, you know, it's like, it's easy to criticize, and that's all I'd like to say to an audience, the heap of whoever he is.
Well, well, let's, yeah. No, no, no. Oh, oh, sir.
You want to be rude to me?
Because you are rude to me.
Okay, let's, let's keep calm and let's, direct comments towards the planning board and we'll interact that way, okay? I, I think, I mean, I don't think any of that has to do with whether or not you orient the, the front to the street side, but...
I would like to add one thing to that, if you'll allow. Clearly, this has been a difficult process in putting together. One aspect of this too is that, you know, we're planning for the future with this building. We don't know what it'll be forever. I hope your business is successful, as I would for any business in East Hampton. It is a liquor store. It is a liquor store that's in an area where we're losing the schools in that area, where there's other bars. It's appropriate to have a liquor store. I personally, you know, I battled with this at first, and with the first project, we still had Maple, when we went through, Maple School was there, so like not having it front and center, not having a liquor store front and center was kind of on my focus at the time. Now everything shifted because those schools aren't there. Now I'm thinking, you know, really, why can't there be access on that front point to make it more of a store? I think Jesse's point about not having to change a lot to do that, I just want to put that out there. I'm not saying you have to or requiring, I want to open a dialogue with you about this. I want to talk to you so that we can improve the, what the community sees and how the community interacts with it. Now, I'm not sure that, that what I'm saying is going to be a benefit in any way to the community, but I'm hoping that we, everyone here can talk about it a little bit and that you're open. Okay? That's all. Okay?
So I, I have a question.
Yeah.
If you put it on like a window, couple of windows and just look like it's a nice, look like a store, that's fine too. But if you're gonna be closed, you says you have to put it on storefront, on front side. It's, it's gonna be hard for us to do that. So much work we putting into this plan and if it's not going through, I don't wanna do it. I'm putting already so much money in this business property, okay?
So that, so reorienting it would, would mean that you'd have to shut down the store for a longer period of time, is that, yeah?
And if we do all, all those things, I'm gonna be shut down, I'm gonna be lose the revenue and I have to do all work. I'm not gonna do it that way, you know?
I'm sure it would interrupt the flow of the, of the thing that you've designed too 'cause you've got a customer flow and where you're putting shelves and you've designed and put effort into all of that. I respect it, but it is my job to ask always if there's other ways of looking at it. I hope you understand that.
I understand.
I think what he's, he's trying to say is basically, you know, the reason that this went the way it is is because they really don't want to be shut down for a long period of time.
Sure, respect that.
And, you know, obviously they're gonna end up losing a little time, but if they have to completely reconfigure the store, that's a much bigger deal.
Is it possible, have you looked into phased construction with the, with the liquor store so that you could actually phase, say, build the front part, the storefront that faces Cottage Street, have that ready to go, transfer your liquor store over to it and then fix the, the current space to, to, you know, so you have a second phase, so you still keep your business open? And then once the back part is, is actually finished, you open up the, you know, a construction wall between and make it one business so that you could actually have a front entrance and still keep this?
It's gonna be a lot of work for us to like a moving back and forth.
Well, you're already doubling pretty much the, the square footage of the store, right?
Yeah, you're gonna have to renovate.
Yes, and doubling, but like and then I have to do the cooler on that side, then it's, it's really hard to do work on that schoolers and everything.
Yeah.
Are you improving the existing store as part of this or are you leaving the existing store as it is?
He's improving that too.
You are, so, so regardless, you have to fix the existing space?
I know, but then, once I'm gonna fix that one, then it's gonna be on other side and then to that way. So like I'm gonna be one cooler set, then I have to do the other side cooler too. So it's gonna be take long period to fix that all that stuff.
Yeah, Jeff?
Well, I think, you know, I've seen different iterations of this and I think that the applicant has made a lot of effort to, to, so we'll call it the archway, so this lower area here with the staircases, that, there was an iteration where these stairs did not exist. Um, and there was no ability to even get into the archway, so, so there is some acknowledgement that the applicant has made that I think.
The front stairs what you're referring to?
Yeah.
The front stairs, which were in aversion, I've seen, so.
The front, the front facing one wasn't in that.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, I think to, to hone it in a little bit for, for future discussion is, you know, the idea would be, um, the planning board's task is to look at your current proposal and the way that you would like to use the building. And then I think if they do need to take the one step further to make sure that the building would be usable should you, should you sell it or, or change the use. And I think in my, in my observation, it comes down to this, this access, this airway, this area right here, which is currently a wall. And I wanted to just broach the idea of that if it were installed as a door that were, were there and in place, but maybe then the applicant chose not to allow the public to enter from there, it would be available for future versions of the store going forward. So it would make it a little bit more renovatable, uh, re- is that a word?
Yeah.
Unavailable. Um, the other thing, I just wanted to ask a question about this new retail space. So I think that was the question that just came up is that, um, this space is not currently, um, built and it would be an addition. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone, like, that there's an understanding that, um, there are some improvements proposed to the existing store, um, which is the area on the right. So the, the roof coming down towards Cottage Street is a new addition. So I think some of the comments that have come forward are about that addition being tweaked in some way. So it's not a substantial, you know, no one's asking to do something that you're not proposing, but just to look at the way that that addition is being proposed. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, that that front portion is an addition.
There's some alteration to that existing structure.
Correct, and I think the last, I won't belabor it anymore, but I just wanted to point out in this elevation that I think you can see here that the existing gym's facade is the white.
Yep.
And then to the left is the addition. So I think it's, some of the comments have been around that addition and whether that, whether there's some window treatments or doors that could be potentially added in there.
Okay.
So I just wanted to kind of try to pull that together a little bit.
Can you scroll back up to the floor plan? Cause I'm just trying to clarify where.
It's a little split.
Yeah, so which, what part roughly speaking is the existing? Where does the line with the new retail space and the existing store? Is it just that top rectangle basically?
So the existing store currently, and tell me if I'm wrong, but it's pretty much this wall over.
You're off.
Or is it this wall?
Yeah, sleeves here, wall right there.
This wall coming over.
You're gonna have that off.
Here, up to here.
Okay.
Got it.
So this is new and then this is all.
That's a big expansion for the store.
It is, it'd be great.
Okay.
If I may, I forgot, so, you know, what's, what the board is being asked is there was, there is an approved project and the permit is still valid and this board is asked to sort of evaluate the changes. I just wanted to, um, sort of for clarity, show the, if I do this correctly, show the previous elevations for, for reference. So this is the version that, you know, for intensive purposes, the board's comparing this approved plan to the, the plan that we were just discussing. So this is where you get a little bit, you can understand that in the previous version, the gyms' building stayed a little bit more intact. And so that's where the change in expansion is shown. So just for reference, I think that's what, part of what the planning board will do throughout the rest of the hearing is compare the changes and make sure that they meet the smart growth standards.
All right, I am just gonna read, did you guys receive this comment from the DPW?
You may not, it came in this afternoon.
This just came in this afternoon from the city engineer, so, um, I'll just read this in the record. So it says, "This office has reviewed the modified plan for retail and residential construction at forty-seven, forty-nine Cottage Street. The stormwater improvements proposed are acceptable. Um, we are currently completing roadwork improvements on Cottage Street and would ask the applicant to construct their new sidewalk and handicap ramp at the west end of the walk to match the one just constructed on the opposite side of the driveway. Road moratorium requirements include flowable fill for utility installations and due to the installation of a structure as well as multiple utility lines, we would require also that Cottage Street be milled and paved full width for disturbance to the new roadway from sidewalk, water, sewer, and drain construction."
Any problems with that?
That makes sense, okay. Do folks have any other questions at this point before we open this up? Jim, go.
Where exactly is handicap access to the retail space?
Handicap access is adjacent to doorway there. That is the handicap for that and then for apartments are on the other side.
Okay.
They can also, handicap access can come through the building also from those other two spaces.
So somebody could get from that entrance into the retail space from the parking lot?
From the lower parking lot?
Under the current plan?
From the parking lot where the two handicap spaces are indicated?
It's not.
Right here on the left side.
There's an internal ramp in, in there. There's an, there's an internal ramp in the building that they can come into the building and go through the building if need be. But it's purely intended for residents.
It would be access, it would be residence only, right?
Yeah, that, that.
The only, the only would not, the only entrance that would not be resident only is the package store entrance, which does have its required secondary egress.
Right, it's, it's standard accessible.
So essentially the.
But actually we also have a.
So you're going to have four handicap accessible apartments?
No, no.
Not workable.
Well, there are, there's a requirement that at least one of the units is accessible. That's the first floor unit in the back.
Well, we actually have an elevator which actually requires all units in the building to be group one accessible, which they are, uh, which means that they can be, uh, reconfigured to be fully accessible without structural modification. And then the parking requirements based on the zoning code, in this case the smart growth rule, uh, based on the percentage of the, or based on the number of bedrooms.
Yeah, head on to any retail space.
And which a certain percentage of that has to be accessible spaces.
Okay, so, so even though the four apartments that are on the first floor or street level in the back of the building appear to be big enough for handicap accessibility and the design of the bathrooms, et cetera, they aren't going to specifically be handicap accessible? My only concern is that if you're going to have four handicap accessible apartments and put handicap people in there, you need more handicap parking. That's all I was getting at, so.
I'm not sure that they're advertising this that, are you?
No, we're, we're simply meeting the accessibility code requirements of having all units in the building since they're accessible by all.
Well, I understand that portion of design, but the upper level apartments, there's no way you could turn a wheelchair around in those bathrooms.
According to the code, you can, so.
Pardon?
According to the code, you can, or at least adequately enough. So if you wanna take it up with the state board, you can.
Let me toss out a question if you will allow, Mr. Chair, about the, the business. You have a lot of expanded square footage and gyms going in. Is the number of employees going to change?
Not, right? Gyms package store?
Number of boys.
Probably, but I hired more.
Great. Uh, hopefully locally and, and will that, do you have any of the parking that's for employees?
Parking for employees?
Yeah.
Well, the, the employee parking would be encouraged to be in the back in the lower lot.
Back lower lot, okay.
Plus I have a next door building, so they can go apart on other side too.
Okay.
That's where, yeah, on the other side.
Yeah.
They can come up the ramp in the rear.
And can we ask about deliveries and things like that? We've gone over most of this in the earlier permit, but I just wanna touch on it just so, for the sake of clarification.
We do have a delivery door actually.
Yeah, should, where's the delivery? Where do they come in?
The gym's parking lot and the, on the right hand side. So deliveries would be kind of made at this lot through this door. There's conveyor that they're gonna set up, which will, um, let them easily move things to and from their basement storage.
So these aren't big trucks, these are the alcohol trucks that we see all the time on the road. They're not eighteen wheelers or anything like that?
Only eighteen wheelers comes in and that place is a tomahawk, pick up, pre cycle them.
Okay.
That's all.
And what about, uh, snow removal for those lots? Is there a plan for what to do with snow in the winter?
There's limited snow, um, storage, uh, it's listed on, I believe on the site plan. But so we have, we have some availability in these areas along the edges.
Mm-hmm.
This parking lot will have to have snow removed, obviously if you get too much.
Right.
And then down in here, there's snow storage all along the edge and in the back.
Trash?
Trash, we have trash, um, in the upper corner up there, right here.
Oh, okay.
And is that for the business and the?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
For both.
It's good, 'cause I think right now the trash is pretty close to the parking lot, right, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's an improvement, that's an improvement.
Any other questions at this point?
Right now two business, so we have two trash can we, or need it.
Okay.
Minimize one.
Okay, all right, thank you folks. We're gonna see, is anyone else here that's got any comments or questions? Please come on up, state your name and address and share your thoughts.
Hey, uh, my name is Andrew Eager, resident of East Hampton with my wife Maggie sitting there in the front row. And I also own, uh, we both, Maggie and I own fifty-six Cottage Street, which is, uh, directly across the street from this proposed development. We, uh, just recently finished renovating it, currently houses, uh, Wonderland, um, that's the name of the store. And, uh, I, I wanted to speak to this proposed design, particularly, um, yeah, the smart growth, uh, criteria that's been established for Nashuanic Square, which is what it used to be called. You don't hear people referring to it so much as that, but, uh, that's what I'm gonna refer to. And I think that any comments that I make, um, in regards to this proposal, I, I feel, uh, basically I'm gonna be reiterating the, uh, what I, uh, put in my letter to the board, which, uh, I've been told you all received and.
Yep.
Uh, what Mr. Port just tore up, um, unfortunately.
And I, I would, even though we've seen the letter, if you can share any of those comments again so that the public at large can hear them, or you don't have to read your letter, but I assume.
No, no, I, I have, um, well, I'll start first of all, before I even address the building, with the site itself and with Nashuanic Square. And, um, and perhaps by also saying that, you know, there are certain design challenges that we face here in East Hampton by being bisected by two major state roadways that make it extremely difficult for us to have a pedestrian friendly streets. And everyone probably here remembers that a woman recently was killed crossing the street pretty much, uh, in, in the area that we're talking about. DPW chief told me recently that twenty thousand vehicles go up and down Cottage Street every day. Ten thousand in, pretty much in each direction. That makes it very hard, along, along with Route ten, to carve out an area that is, that has any type of downtown feel to it. Any type of gathering spot for pedestrians. As, you know, when you cross the street here, it's usually you gotta dart across. And I would, I would say that in looking at Nashuanic Square right now, it is the closest thing we have to a downtown. It's the place where we celebrate First Night. It's, it's central to our, to our, um, cultural chaos festivities. And it, and it, and we are at a unique juncture in our history and whereby we have an opportunity here to really carve out a, a, a true downtown for ourselves and to improve upon what is there, to encourage pedestrian access and I would, I, and, and foot traffic. And, and, um, if you stand out, uh, you know, in the process of renovating our store at, at fifty-six Cottage, you know, I spent a lot of time watching the square, particularly at nights. Uh, you'd see young families coming down the sidewalk, um, to, uh, window shop, look in the display windows, go to Mount Tom's for an ice cream. And, you know, that, that was a really encouraging thing that you wouldn't have seen twenty-five or thirty years ago when, um, perhaps the design that is now proposed would have been, would have been okay. But our town is, is, uh, I think Mr. Port just said, uh, the, the, the building has, has, uh, grown in shape and size. And I would point out that so has East Hampton. I mean, each year here, we are growing and we're not gonna go back. The town that was here twenty-five, thirty years ago is, is not gonna be the same town. And, and I would say that we have a unique moment, as I started to say, that we could carve out a space for ourselves that is truly pedestrian friendly. And I, I, I would say that my issues with the proposed, proposed design is that there are, that the smart growth district, in order, it has certain criteria and, and, and that needs to be met. And, and in turn for that, the developer, the owner, Mr. Patel, you get back greater lot density. You, you know, it's not like you're, it's, it's, it, that's a free, there are conditions to that. You're given higher buildings. And, 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 and in exchange, the town is also gonna get money back. This is state criteria. This is not stuff that's set by the town. And if you look at, at that criteria, the, um, a, a huge part of that is having, um, is paying homage to the, um, to the existing architecture of the area that you are developing. And I would say that, you know, I'm looking at, um, you know, we could start with, with this side of the building here. The, uh, the parking lot side that faces down to the Cottage Square Apartments. And I would say that that certainly i- is relatively, uh, relatively well mirrors the, 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 the old Cottage Square factor. They've done a pretty good job with that and, and, and that's impressive. And I, and I, I really wanna commend, uh, that, that part of the design. There is some problems with that upfront and, and, and that, and that's my primary concern. Because the smart growth initiative calls for, um, it, it calls for, it, well, the historical part of, of the front, it, it, it doesn't really match the, the storefronts on Cottage Street, across the street, including my own store. When we, when we, when, when we redesign. When we redesigned our store, the architect asked me at the time, it was an old sixties design, people had been in town a long time, probably remember it. And the architect asked me, well, what do you wanna do here? And I said, well, what I wanna do is bring, tear off the front facade, bring, bring the design forward into, into, into the present, but at the same time, pay homage, homage to the existing storefronts that have been here for a long time. And the architect, the architect looked at me and said, exactly my idea. And this particular architect also had done, my wife and Maggie and I also owned the Cottage Square, the storefront that houses Cottage Square Books.
White Square.
And, and.
White Square.
Excuse me, it's White Square Books. And, and this particular architect had worked on the redesign of that storefront as well and really blended it well with the existing architecture. She did a great job. And, and so that was sort of the impetus for what we wanted to do. We looked at what she had done there. She wasn't, she was with another, a larger firm at the time, and she had a hand in that. And we wanted to duplicate that. We wanted to blend it in and say, you know what, this, we have a great architectural history here in East Hampton. And why not respect that? So that's what we did, and I feel that we did a good job doing that. However, in, across the street, and this is the, you could, this, the lower design there, I think that my problem with that is that there is no windows. What you have, there are really no windows that accurately reflect the storefronts across the street. They come, that, you know, begin at the pond and go all the way out to Nini's or Casello's. And there, there just isn't that. And so you have no, if you look at people when they come down the Cottage Street sidewalk, they look in the display windows, you know, they're strolling, they're taking their time. It's great for business. But this storefront here doesn't do that. In essence, what it does is it turns its back to the square. And the emphasis remains where it's always been, at the main entrance to the, to what is now the primary retail business, is in the back, at the package store where it's always been. And that is contrary to smart growth guidelines, which intend to promote pedestrian foot traffic. And all that does is stick with the existing automobile track. People roll into the parking lot and buy, and buy, you know, do what they wanna do, conduct their business, but it's all in the back of the building. It does not face out on what could be our main street, our main square. And the fact that there's only one business there, I feel, you know, that's another thing that hurts. If there were multiple storefronts there with each one, how are you gonna, down the road? How are you gonna keep the option open for multiple storefronts if you don't have display windows? So that people can look in and say, all right, look at who's selling what here? And so that is a very significant factor. And it also occurs as you wrap it around. There are, there is, you know, I had an architect draw up an existing design here, a modification for what you see there, okay? Just where the package store is now, the windows wrapped, this is just an example. I'm not saying it needs to be used. I'm just, what I'm, what I'm simply saying is that there are alternatives, that the architect could work in a more people-friendly design that promotes neighborhood connectivity. And, you know, for anyone that can't see it.
Up on the screen, sir.
How do you talk the screen?
Oh, okay.
Can you please just stay by the podium, please?
Sorry. What's that?
Excuse me.
You know, honestly, I had, it's a rough sketch. It's just, it's just there to show the possibilities. You know, I don't see how, why it is that Mr. Patel couldn't move his liquor store, build, build the left side of the development for us and then.
Sir.
Well, hold on here.
Sir, Mr. Patel, please wait, I'll let you respond, okay?
First of all, as I said, you're getting greater, you're getting greater density.
Sir, Mr. Hebert, can you address?
You're being granted things, but you're not returning what.
Mr. Hebert, can you address us instead of addressing the applicant, please?
All right, so the bottom line is that that's just an example of what it could look like. And as currently designed, there are, the building, the current proposal before us is really two separate buildings. One in no way relates to the other. One is basically, you know, a sixties or seventies design with the slope roof. And it has no relation at all to the, to the new part of the building on the left side. It, see, there you go. That's, and there is no way that the two meld into one another at all. They're just, they're very separate and they're really there, as Mr. Patel has said. They're there for financial reasons. And, and I would say that that, that developing an aesthetic for that, again, I would not be arguing with this if it were on the outside of town. If we're on Route ten or somewhere on the outskirts of town, I would not be here. But this is a special location, and it should be honored as such for everybody in this room, for all residents of the town. We deserve a chance, and we deserve a chance for a real downtown square. And this would be, if it were done in the right way, there are gonna be changes over the years. You know that there are gonna be other changes to the square. Buildings are gonna come down and be replaced. It's just, it's just the way of, that the city works, any city.
Okay.
And so I just. So again, that, the main thing is that the main entrance is in the rear, it's not in the front, that's an issue.
Right, okay. We covered all that, though, right? I wanna give other people a chance to talk.
And, and that's all.
Okay.
Again, it's, the smart growth stuff needs to be on, it really does. And I know it's gonna be more money for Mr. Patel. But in the long run, it's an investment that he will, he's gonna, he's gonna realize a return on that investment down the road with interest.
Okay.
It really will, he will.
All right, thank you.
He's not gonna lose here.
Can I say something really quickly?
Yep.
Are you done?
Nope.
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you very much, please. I wanted to say to you, sir, and I'm considering everything you said, we all are on the board and everything else is going on here, but in no relation whatsoever to what you've just said and is being discussed. Personally, I've worked with Mr. Port a lot. I have great respect for his work, I think he does excellent work. But I cannot condone the act that I just witnessed here. And for me, I'd like to apologize that those materials were just thrown at you. I think that's unacceptable here, and it's not what anyone should expect for behavior in a planning board. I just wanna make that statement.
I understand this frustration.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Mr. Patel, any responses? Do you guys have anything you wanna say? No? Okay. Please, come on up.
So you want.
You got, you gotta go all the way to the podium, I'm sorry.
Name and address.
My name's Bob Namowitz. So you're asking for the entrance to the package store to be in the front, but then the parking's gonna be in the back? Do you really want pedestrians walking with cases of beer and liquor consistently from the front to the back? You know, I can understand where it would affect his business flow. You know, I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't go there, I'd go to Smitty's instead. So I don't have to carry, you know, I buy cases of beer for Rotary Club. I'm not gonna carry cases of beers all the way around the building from back to front. So I understand why he wants the rear entrance. Excuse me.
Fair, thank you.
May I make a quick redress of that?
Hold on one second, I got someone here who hasn't spoken yet. Nope, take your time.
Don't rush it.
Do we need to follow again?
Exactly.
Hi, my name is Beth McLeheny. I'm at Fifty-Six Cottage Street. And I don't know if this is the phase where we ask this, but as a business on the street, I'd like to understand how this whole project, the building logistics of it, are gonna affect the rest of the businesses on the street. The paving project that just started, we got no notification of ahead of time. Nothing, except a robocall Wednesday, and all of a sudden, I've lost, I have no business. And so I would like to understand the actual, I don't know if this is the time and place to ask this, but the actual logistics of the building, how it's going to be done without disrupting all the rest of the business on the street? And the dust and the dirt and the noise and the, this is a massive construction, which I have no issue with, other than how does that, how is that going to be done so it does not impact business on the street for the rest of us?
Yeah, great question. You wanna come on up?
This, the, this is gonna be pretty much contained to the site. The left side, the east, the west side of the, of the project can be constructed first. There's gonna be dust control, there'll be, you know, that's part of, of the stormwater permit process is that we have a plan in place for controlling dust and tracking. There's a tracking pad on the entrance for the construction side for vehicles coming and going. There will be a short disruption when they connect utilities, where we're gonna have to trench across the road, which relates to the comments.
Sure.
But otherwise, it really shouldn't be a disruption to the businesses.
What's the timeline for construction? Not at first, I don't know. Six months, okay.
And maybe deliveries of all the materials, maybe in, early in the morning, late in the evening or something like that, so to, not to disrupt traffic as much? Or is that all times during the day?
That's gonna be dependent, I would say.
Yeah.
Is there a construction plan already?
As far as the building plan?
Specific timelines, that, that sort of thing?
No, there's not.
Okay. You mentioned the stormwater, are you in front of the cons con already? No? This one's here, we deal with stormwater on this one. Okay. Okay. Anybody else comments, questions? All right, Mr. Hebert, briefly, please.
Sorry. I, I just wanted to, to address the gentleman who had the concern about the package store entrance being in the rear was certainly a valid concern, that you would have to walk around. And I don't see why, why not, why you can't have a front in a rear entrance that would accommodate both pedestrians in the front and people that are, that have, that bring their cars in the rear. Right now, the emphasis is strictly on bringing your car there. And it doesn't take into consideration, as smart growth wants you to consider, people on the sidewalk. And that's it, it could be both. You don't, one doesn't rule out the other. And it is certainly understandable why, you know, someone would not wanna walk around with a case of beer from front to back. But I think, as I said, people might wanna walk in from the front. It's probably gonna create more business even for the store itself and down the road. If there are other stores going in there on, that would, that would, along Cottage Street, then it's gonna accommodate them as well.
Thanks.
I actually can't think of one liquor store that ever been in that has two separate entrances.
I think there are, sort of security concerns for. I mean, I think you could have two, but you probably would need to have more staff.
Two points of sale, yeah, so you make sure that someone's watching each door.
At the end of the day, I find the applicant's argument very compelling. I mean, the reality is, is I too share some of your concerns, Mr. Hebert, about the future of the building. The reality is, this is his property. This is a successful business that's benefiting our community, hiring in our community. And the reality is, is this is a massive improvement in terms of housing. There's a lot of good that's coming from this. And what meets his needs is the design that he's putting forward. Jeff, I did like your idea of just putting a door there possibly. And I'd love to hear if the applicant would be willing to entertain that, even if they're not using it, because it gives you so much more future usability. I'm not saying that I would, things would hinge on that. Ultimately, I wanna state that me personally, while I do wanna see this go for the future, I think that your application as a whole is, is solid.
Can someone from the applicant just talk about that, the concept of putting in a door that's?
Closed.
Closed and locked?
A future door.
Says like, please use other door. Rock back.
So that if there was ever a need in the future to either use this with, for someone else to use it or potentially divide the space and use it for a second retail space if you wanted to, that there would already be a way in and out that sort of lines up with those stairs and makes it an easy streetfront access for some future use? Or in the event that your store ever did wanna reconfigure and move your point of sale to the front and your main entrance to the front?
Frame it as a window arc, just don't even put the door in.
Is that something that'd be relatively?
Oh, yeah, there's probably a version where we had that. It's more, it's more, I guess there was a concern about it being a false.
We can't, the home audience can't hear you. Thousands of people at home watching on TV.
Tens of thousands.
Is this actually recorded?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So use your TV voice.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll go away.
All right. So let's see, yeah. Code-wise, we could certainly do that. Function-wise, we don't have an issue. You know, we were, I guess there was a little bit of concern about having a, a false visual, like if you.
You may have a lot of people trying to open that door during any given day, but if it's locked, it's locked.
What if it's just a window, it could be framed as a door later.
Please use other door with an arrow, yeah.
Well, sure, we could hook it up, like a, we can make it addressable, for sure. There wouldn't be anything wrong with that. You know, if, if, if everybody, if people think it's an improvement. I mean, I guess as far as you're concerned, it's ornamental. But, you know, I mean, part of the, the, sort of when we talk about the space being adaptable to future uses, that's kind of sub already in mind, but it's a non-bearing wall that can easily be converted into whatever type of entry suits of business as, as it might transform into.
Gyms is growing, and when you reach that level where you're Liquor's forty-four and you're the big chain and you're going to buy up the Tasty Top Land to put your new building up there that's five hundred thousand square feet, you're gonna wanna use this building for something that has a door there. Just saying.
Also, y'all do got that rule about no buildings with single businesses over seventy, tens of thousands.
Yeah. Okay, and I think we should talk about the stormwater, too. If there's someone.
I thought, didn't the city engineer say he was okay with the stormwater plan? You just read that into the business.
Yes, the city engineer did, but I think we should touch on that since we're the ones that actually approve the plan. Can you give us a brief, a brief overview? We've, we've had the plan, but if you can just.
I guess, I just have a question. So, yeah, so can you walk through the stormwater?
Yeah. Yeah, it's fairly basic. So currently, there's no stormwater, just runs off.
Yeah.
So there is a defunct dry well right out here that's not been worked. So what we've done is created an area that replicates what that would have theoretically taken. And we're collecting that in a water quality unit and putting it into a dry well, which has an overflow that goes into the city system over here. So that's, that's addressing this parking lot, essentially. The roof, roof runoff is being brought around, being, coming around through a drain manifold system that comes down and brings it to the front from here, and then also from the front over here across. So the, these roofs are being picked up over in this corner and then in the back here brought out to Cottage Street. So we have a drain in the back there, like it's just a catch basin. And then we have a water quality unit here that's treating it before it goes into the street. New manhole tying in here. We've got new sewer coming in and tying in over here. Domestic and fire service coming in over here.
So there were no catch basins originally, and now you've added in a whole system and added it into the city's collection system? And the city has signed off on that? Is that what I'm reading from that letter, that the city's okay with this?
Because the difference before it was just overlay and flow, everything.
Yeah. Right, but there was some infiltration anyway, where there's not gonna be.
There was no infiltration, it's all paved, entire site.
Sounds better to me.
Yeah, I mean, it's better in the back for sure, on the gyms parking lot, where they're actually fixing the, fixing the system there. So, I mean, as long as the city okay's with the additional flow of their system.
There's a net reduction in actual flow going into the city system.
How?
How? Due to, actually due to this bit of infiltration going on in here.
Okay.
Okay.
If the city's okay with it, then that's, honestly, I'm, I have not had an opportunity to look at the stormwater plan.
Okay.
I mean, the two ten and one hundred year storms, you're not increasing? You're saying you're decreasing the overall. Through the hundred year event, you're, you're not increasing flow across the site?
Right.
Okay, then that's, that's the requirements of the state.
No brainer.
I mean, it's not hard to control it, because right now, everything runs off.
Into the, into the city system, it all runs off of the city system.
Any other comments or questions from the public? Yes, sir. Yes, sir?
Tom Brown, resident of East Hampton, member of Economic Development Commission. I want to reiterate a couple things, I believe that Jim said, although I couldn't hear you too good from the back too.
Sorry about that.
I'm not concerned about design, I'm not even concerned about the retail portion of this. If you haven't noticed, and EDIC's taking a hard look at it these days, East Hampton has a housing problem. And I would love it in a perfect world if this entire building could be housing, but as, we have a requirement for retail on the first floor, so that's what will happen for now. Maybe in my lifetime that will change, but there's a housing crunch which is driving up prices, doesn't help us to reduce taxes, and at every level of the housing food chain, it's just locked up right now. People have nowhere to go that want to downsize, people have nowhere to go if they want to go into a new apartment, and this 18 or 19 units will free that up, will let that real estate market begin to churn a little bit. From the business perspective, on Cottage Street, it brings people living downtown. If you look at any revitalization of any community, and East Hampton is revitalized today, but obviously can do even better, bringing consumers to live downtown helps, helps every, every phase of any businesses downtown. So I just want to make sure that whatever it is the Patel's or the planning board does, I just want to make sure this project happens because of the housing component of the project and what it can mean for the city.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, can I ask you to come all the way back up?
Do you have to go up there?
No, I'll, I'll let, I'll let it slide this time.
So if it gets passed, when is it supposed to start? Is it gonna hit us at Christmas time?
Good question. So we talked about the six-month window, but when, how long after you get an approval would it take you to get going?
January, February?
February?
January or February.
January or February, okay.
After Christmas. Okay, thank you.
This is a lot of, a lot of people think I'm just this time.
Exactly. Any other comments or questions?
So do we want to try and nail, discuss with you a little bit more about that door so that that's a condition, or?
I think so.
So are you willing to put some sort of framing there so that, for now, it's a window or a door that's not in use, just for the future? Is that something that you're willing to put in?
We can put the door, that's fine.
Putting the door, okay. And as far as other conditions, we had discussed, the city engineer's comment about the new sidewalk and handicap ramp matching what's already in existence, does that, is that okay with you folks?
I believe he said to match the DOD private sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, construct the new sidewalk and handicap ramp at the west end of the walk to match the one just constructed on the opposite side of the driveway. I assume that's not a problem. And then the third one is the issue about milling and paving for any of the disturbance on the new pavement on Cottage Street, I assume that's not a problem either. And so then, looking back at the last decision, the only other conditions we had, the first one says extend the curb to align with the existing Cottage Street sidewalk to a new crossing at the Cottage Street Apartments driveway to facilitate ADA compliant passage. I think that has now been completed as far as this project, that just.
Yeah, I think we would try to trump that position, condition with the one.
That we just talked about.
Yes, because now that that other side has been constructed. So I will add, if we're going quickly towards conditions, there will be some notation that the sidewalk and milling be done in coordination with the city engineer. So I think that, and the applicant has expressed willingness to, to talk throughout that construction of the sidewalk, so that it's gonna be compatible with.
And I think they.
Coordinate with DWD.
And I think the sidewalk was actually in front of the driveway, so they're already showing it right there in that, so.
The other condition for the last permit had to do, it's sort of our standard affordable housing one, but applicant will be required to submit annual report to the city for the affordable housing restriction within 60 days after the end of the calendar year. The report will provide proof that each unit is rented, the tenant's income verification at time of occupancy and annually thereafter, a copy of the lease agreement and the rent charge for each unit, as well as any other information requested by the city that's necessary to confirm compliance with the affordable housing restriction. Yes, Jeff?
So the, and I, so the only thing that I'd like to add to that is that assumes construction and occupancy of the units, and then it's annual reporting thereafter, so that's good. What I think is important at this stage is that prior to a certificate of occupancy for the dwelling units, that all the affordable housing restriction information is reviewed and approved by DHCD. So the applicant has provided some information, I don't actually think it made it to the board, where should the board grant this approval, they will coordinate with DHCD for the revised plans and formulate, that's a lot of legwork, there's some legal documents. So what we would normally do is allow construction to commence, whatever the phasing is with the retail, the, and then before the dwelling units are eligible for a certificate of occupancy is when we want proof and evidence that DHCD has been, all their requirements have been fulfilled.
And that proof goes to you as a check box or the building inspector?
Yeah, it goes to the building inspector, so for prior to a CO for any of the residential units, you know, the affordable housing requirements are gonna be in place, and then that condition will follow for annual reporting thereafter.
Understand and agree with that?
Yeah.
And just, you know, in terms of, just being an issue where the need is more handicap parking, that obviously can be reconfigured, add additional bases in the.
Yeah, I think you've met the code.
Yeah, you know.
I think that becomes almost a market force thing, right? If you end up having a half dozen handicap tenants, then you'll have the impulse, right, incentive to put those in. So our specific findings to approve this Smart Growth, we have to find that the applicant submitted the required fees and information set forth in the regulations, the project is described, and the application meets all of the requirements and standards set forth in the section 7.4 and the regulations, or a waiver has been granted therefrom, and that any extraordinary adverse potential impacts of the property on nearby properties have been adequately mitigated. I mean, I personally feel like there's sort of three options for what could be here, it could be what it is now, it could be any of the things that Mr. Patel could do by right, where we would have no control over the aesthetics of the building, or it could be this, or it could be sort of the perfect money is no object, and as much as I would like that, I think this is superior to the other options, and I think balancing it against Mr. Patel's legitimate, you know, business concerns and financial restraints, it seems like a reasonable compliance to me.
I agree. I, I think it's a beautiful building, I do, I commend the architect for, and the process. I think it's such a better improvement. I, I do wish it could be a better storefront, but that's, I think I'm a keg at this point. I mean, I think it's a great, great design.
Harry, any comments or questions? No pressure, bud.
No pressure. That, that door in that, in that package store makes no sense, because first of all, I told you I agree with that guy about carrying beer out to the back, why would you possibly buy beer and why have to walk around the building? Makes absolutely no sense. Plus you have an open container law, you can't go in the front and buy beer and come back out and open it on the street. So why would that street be there, for cosmetic purposes?
Future sales is why it's being suggested, for future purpose of the build.
Future use. Let's deal with it today.
Right, well, we do have the opportunity to plan a little bit for someone that's a relatively insignificant change.
All right, so in the future, what would you build in the future?
Think of it as a filled-in door.
I think there's two options, I think one is that they could determine that they do want to change their front to that, or their entrance to the front, or have two options, or two entrances.
Oh, yeah, they want to do it in the future, right.
Right, but, or alternately, I think it's a relatively simple space to split, as it had been in the original design two years ago, and they may very well determine they'd like to, and I think to the extent that that encourages a new applicant to have their business forward facing onto Cottage Street, I think it's worked the minimal difficulty and expense at this point in the process.
They could come back and thank us, Harry.
You could put a door there, but hey, it's like a doorway to nowhere.
Any other comments or questions from planning board members?
Are you ready for my motion?
I would love a motion.
I motion to approve the special permit for 47, 49 Cottage Street with the, actually, or send that motion. We need to talk about this condition just really quickly.
Site plan approval.
Thank you for correcting me, but, yeah.
Is it possible for, to propose just a framed space for the door for now?
That's what I was just about to touch, we need to actually hone in on exactly what that condition is before we move forward. That's fine with me, because he needs wall, and I just want to make sure that it's super easy in the future to put a door there, because that's the future I see.
If you put a door there now, you're gonna have to put a sign telling people to go around.
Frame in is okay with me, as long as the frame is there for it. Anyone else have a problem?
I mean, I think the architect is.
Create a door frame into that portion of the building.
I think that's fine. I think if it's made ready for a door.
That's more than a.
That's pretty easy.
Okay. Okay, so the wording for this condition is that the applicant will place in the Cottage Street facing first floor.
Let's get some expert.
Yeah, go ahead, help me out.
Yeah, it occurred to me that it might be a good idea to, I mean, yeah, I, I think, I think I understand the intention, and I think there's a lot of options. Right, I was curious if we could go ahead and design something, is it going to get second-guessed later, is there a procedure to, do we submit a sketch?
You don't, that's why we're trying to word something that encompasses several different options, depending on what you think would be most feasible, but if you could tell us what you think would be feasible, to sort of allow for a relatively easy.
Good answer.
Addition of a door. You've already said, I think that's not a load-bearing wall, so it's pretty easy to do anyway, but I think if you make it a little more appetizing to either Mr. Patel in the future or a new tenant, even if it's just another glassed-in, but, you know, fogged window or something.
Yeah, it might be a window at this point, you know, that is, that has the general framework of a door.
What's being asked for that's different? I guess something that's shaped like a door. There's framing that's there.
Yeah.
Already, so that basically somebody, if you do decide to divide, and all you do is pop out the blocks to the panel or whatever.
That, that is exactly.
Or it can be, it can be a non-door, that's a window.
Right.
Well, all right, so we're, we're gonna, I guess we'll figure, we'll do like an extruded aluminum frame type glazing system on that wall. So when they, when we design that fabricated, we'll design a door shaped, a three-by-seven-foot panel that, you know, we can maybe get them to detail in a way where a future, yeah, business tenant.
Okay, so our condition would describe that across from the stairs facing Cottage Street, there'll be a door-shaped sized opening that can be easily altered.
How about just accommodations for a future?
Accommodations for a future door, love it. Always go to the experts.
Like one of those dog doors, you can go in from the outside.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the site, site plan, or the plan approval.
And basically.
All right, I'm gonna.
Hold on, folks.
Hold on, here it comes. I, I make a motion to approve the plan approval for 47 and 49 Cottage Street, map 54 parcels two and three, with the condition that a, give me the wording you just used.
Accommodations for.
Accommodations for a door.
Yeah.
Being on the first floor Cottage Street facing side be included in the.
And.
And this.
We've got the two city engineer conditions.
And the two city engineer conditions are added?
And the affordable housing requirement from the prior.
What he said?
Prior CO.
Oh, back up. Sorry.
You want me to start over?
Not all the way.
No, so.
City engineer conditions are.
Two, two conditions from the city engineer, one regarding the sidewalk and handicap ramp, the other involving any utility work done on Cottage Street, and then the fourth condition would be taken from the prior decision, number two regarding the affordable housing restriction.
So there's a requirement for prior to certificate of occupancy, DHCD documentation, and then post-documentation and annual.
Got it, please add those to my motion. I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, all right.
And thank, congratulations, I like to add, I really think this is a great project, and you're doing great for our community, good luck and congratulations.
Chris, you second my?
I did.
All right. We are not done yet, folks, so if you're done, if you could just leave quickly and quietly, that would be great. Moving right along, a public hearing for the October Company, seeking a special permit under section 12.7.
He does.
Did you say he does a great job?
He really does.
He does, I know.
These two are bailing me out, you guys are doing half my work tonight.
Oh, you think I was being facetious or something?
No, no, I was agreeing, I just wanted to make sure.
I do like when Chris takes a look over at me like, they get involved, he want me to.
Is this the whole team up here?
Am I gonna be the muscle here?
This is the A-team?
All right, folks, so who would like to walk us through this, realizing that we sort of got halfway through this last summer, I think, but I understand things have changed a little bit, and hopefully we can hear what's going on, and.
I'll start off.
All right, please.
Our assistant member over there, I guess.
Marguerite, you're gonna get him conflicted out of all this work.
Good evening, I'm Mike Schaefer. Contrary to some of my friends' belief, I'm not a dirty Sanders impersonator.
That's all I can see now.
I get that. Anyway, I'm the principal owner of the October Company Group of Companies, we're again applying for the permit to bill, add approximately 54,000 square feet to an adjacent application building. Last year, we withdrew the application because we didn't feel we adequately dealt with the noise and dust, so we just, and, you know, so, since that time.
Excuse me, sir, I apologize for interrupting your speaking, they're making a little bit too much noise in the back, and we just sent an enforcer to go deal with it. I'm having trouble hearing. If you could just pause for about 20 seconds until he cracks that whip, thank you. All right, I think you can probably do that.
I get to be the bouncer tonight, Joe.
Could, can I ask you to repeat that last statement you made about the noise, because I couldn't hear.
We withdrew the application because we didn't deal with it adequately. Okay. Since that time, we spent about $350,000 to solve those issues, and the details will be discussed later. To sort of bring, bring everybody up to date, who we are and what we are, the October Company Group of Companies was purchased 33 years ago by my family and three managers of those businesses. The ownership has changed because people get older, some people retire, and one of them was dead, so, but anyway. Going forward, we are, my son and daughter will continue to run these businesses. The companies consist of the following, the October Company, which makes furniture components, inserts for doors, and serves the closet and the furniture industries, Chem Metal, which is on Neal Street, is a value-added distributor of decorative metals and wood, and adhesive application, a manufacturer of breakers sensitive tape. In total, we are the second-largest manufacturing business in East Hampton, and employ 175 people. In the last five years, five and a half years, we spent $11.2 million, and $4.2 million of that was in adhesive application. Adhesive is our largest business, and it's growing. And currently, we currently operate out of two plants, which we went through last time, and the addition is to make us more efficient and to let us continue to grow. There's a lot of talk in the US about we don't, we don't manufacture anything anymore. Adhesive is a real manufacturer, we, we're not just an assembly operation, we coat adhesive onto substrates, and then cut it and into various rolls, or die-cut it into gaskets, it's, the product is primarily used for gasketting and heating and air conditioning, sealing windows, and splicing tapes for various splicing applications. Currently, we have 175 associates, occupy four buildings, and pay $137,000 per year in property taxes. We're excited about our and East Hampton's long-term growth, and this plant, plant expansion is, you know, a tangible expression of that. At this point, I'd like to introduce the medical team, starting off with Mark Reed, Heritage Survey, Steve Peppin, he's the Director of Purchasing and Adhesive, Mike Burn, One Construction, Michael Pell, attorney, David Horowitz, and Tim Kukak, tie, tie and bond, and Russ Delardi, plant manager of Chem Metal and our project manager. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Reed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I guess I will work from the screen because I think that's easiest. As mentioned in the beginning, the board has seen the site. We have been hired by the October Company to take a different look at the project and have come up with a slightly different site design plan than was previously submitted. So I'd like to run through that with the board in itself. So the first sheet is the cover sheet that outlines a set of plans. And as you can see, to the O'Neill Street, it runs kind of diagonal across. There's a rail trail that runs around the backside of the property, and I've got a little fancy pointer if I can get it to work. Being on the, this portion of the property, which is the easterly side, call this the southerly side, being O'Neill Street. Chem Metal, which is existing building here. And adhesive applications building is located right here with its parking, existing parking area over here. What is being proposed is an addition to, to the rear of the building, as Mike mentioned. As well as a small office addition to the front of the building, being right here. So the next sheet is the existing conditions plan. We went out and did a topographical and tied into the boundary survey. So this shows all the existing features within the site itself. So that the property in itself, and bear with me because I can't see that far to really read the numbers, comprises of a six-point-six acre parcel, kind of in a pie shape, as well as an additional parcel, which will come back before the board or an A&R plan. If you could scroll down just a little bit, Jeff.
Over.
Down, yeah, or I'm sorry, up, so I can see, sorry, up. So an acre of one point zero nine acre piece of property that would be added to adhesive applications site to form the approximately eight acre piece of property that would encompass the project in itself today. The Chem Metal site is not being touched, there's no, no activity going on, being proposed to that. Excuse me. So the next sheet that we have is a requirement within the special permit application to prepare a plan that shows all the abutters within three hundred feet of the property as well as the zoning for that. Lovefield Street is on the opposite side of the rail trail. So on the easterly side, there's R thirty-five zoning and R fifteen. Everything from the rail trail to the east is industrial, part of the industrial park that was developed years ago by the city in itself. So the next set of plans we have is typically a demolition plan that would show what would get removed during construction. So that along the rail trail, we have a hatched-in area that is currently some woods, brush, and invasive species that would get removed along the rail trail itself. And then long-term removal of the existing parking lot. And again, this is gonna have to be in phases because the existing facility would be in use during the construction of the warehouse in the back, in addition to the back, so it would be phased. The plan also shows a construction entrance, a stone tracking pad and construction entrance to allow vehicles, construction vehicles to come to the rear of the site while the existing parking lot can be maintained for use by the current employees and visitors that might come to, to the site itself. We did a series of test holes, which were witnessed by the city engineer, assistant city engineer, for the site to come up with a whole drainage plan and application for that. So the sheet here is a site plan that would show the proposed building addition, front and rear, proposed parking area, stormwater system, a rain garden located in the middle of the site itself that complies with DEP's stormwater criteria for the project in itself, and adequate truck turning radiuses. The intent is that the current driveway would be moved slightly to the south and trucks would enter the site itself, come around the back. There's a loading dock, if you go up just a little, Jeff. There's a loading dock here, so a tractor-trailer truck that would come into service, back into this loading dock here and/or an existing loading dock on the existing building. And then when they're done, they would continue around and exit the, exit the site through a new driveway further to the south. This is a stormwater basin that is in compliance with the regulations for the project in itself. The architecture of the building facade in the front is gonna remain the same with all the landscaping. There's no real changes to the look of the building. The office addition will complement the existing architecture for the building in itself. We have some new handicap parking spaces, if you go up, I guess, Jeff, or I'm sorry, down. To facilitate the requirements for handicap parking for the site itself. Next sheet takes you through the utility plan, I'm sorry, site grading plan. So this gives all the construction-related details needed to build the parking lot and the grading needed to facilitate the stormwater system. So this is a detailed grading plan showing spot grades and contours for it. The next sheet is.
Can I just ask, would you just describe, I guess, the east property line, just kind of from the, maybe from the top going down? So that's where the, there's a fence proposed and other thing up there?
Yeah, sure. So what is being proposed is from this corner of the building, right here, to the south, all the way down to the south beyond the detention basin, there's gonna be an eight-foot-high vinyl fence. We had a lot of discussions about the project in itself, knowing that the grade of the rail trail is slightly higher by a couple of feet to the site itself. So instead of building a six-foot-high fence, we're requesting a waiver, that's one of the waiver requests that we're having, is to build it up because if you put it six-foot-high, if you're on the rail trail, it'll be looking at almost like a four-foot-high fence. So the applicant is at a good cost proposing to put in an eight-foot-high fence.
When you say vinyl, can you just describe what the fence is, this isn't, this is an opaque fence, there's no holes or anything.
Correct.
You can't see through it, okay.
Right, there's no holes in it.
Okay.
And Mark, while we're on it, what's the plan, I know you mentioned that there's sort of like undergrowth and invasive species, but there's also a lot of pretty sizable trees along that property line, right by the bike path?
So any mature trees that are along the bike path that are not on the property itself will remain. Unfortunately, in order to get a stormwater system in and the addition that is needed, the trees that are on the property will have to come down.
So the proposal is to clear straight to the property line?
Correct, correct. There's a landscape plan that puts back trees along that whole section to replant the trees that are out there today.
Can I just touch on the fence once?
Sure.
The, I think I'm seeing the line, the thick line that's the fence, that's right up against the thing, and that's part of the waiver, too, is its proximity to the.
Correct.
Okay, just fine, though, I know we talked about it at length, and that's one of the things a lot of people wanted. Personally, with those two waivers, I have no problem at all, I think they're a benefit. But I'm not quite understanding the length of the fence. It seems to me in this diagram here, it's going to full, it's really covering the whole site.
So the fence starts at the corner of the building. Here, runs the entire length down, get my head out of the way, down to this end of the stormwater system.
It's the whole thing?
The whole fence, entire length is.
Up to the building corner?
It's five hundred and. Absolutely, yeah, right. Yeah, six hundred and fifty-five, fifty-three feet.
Great.
In length, so that any vehicles coming in, there won't be any light headlights shining beyond the property line towards the rail trail, noise, the whole gamut of protecting.
Now you said vinyl, I'm guessing that's easier to maintain, given that it's vinyl. How long are those intended to last, do you have any idea?
They're, they're all UV-stabilized and last for twenty, twenty-five years without any major maintenance.
The other concern we had was if we were to set the vinyl fence further onto our property, the invasive species would just grow up to the fence.
Yeah.
You know, that are, that are on the rail trail.
Are there any like little dips or culverts for wildlife, small wildlife at anywhere? Any point?
We hadn't thought that, about that, but we could provide that. Or.
Sorry, Harry.
Bring the bottom of the fence up slightly.
Yep.
By six or eight inches, so that, you know, wildlife, small wildlife.
They'll find a way.
I don't worry about that.
That would also give it an opportunity to weave back through there, prevent the approach.
That's a great idea.
Right, that's good thought, didn't think of that.
I'd like to ask Mr. Burns a question.
Sure.
In your professional opinion, how does this new building fit over the old imprint, shall we say, of the old existing plan? How far is, is the building in the same exact place, is it moved to the left or right, or where?
It's in the exact place, except it's been shortened by twelve hundred square feet on the front end.
So how would that affect the backside, by the, by the rail trail?
Would been on the east side of the building. There's an existing storm drain pipe that ran through into the culvert that travels to Lovefield Street. And we pulled the building back so we wouldn't be getting into that, disturbing that.
Okay, so it's further away from the bike path, then?
It's the other side.
The east side, yeah.
Further, further north than the original footprint had it.
All right, so how close is it to Lovefield, is it the same distance to Lovefield Street then?
Yes.
Yeah, that part hasn't changed.
Same on that side?
Yes.
Thank you for answering my questions.
Yes, thanks, Mark.
I ran and got my sets, so I can see a little better. So I believe we're on the site grading plan, showing all the details of the, of the site itself. The sheet C five is the site utility plan. That's showing catch basins, light poles, sewer connection out to O'Neill Street from the rear of the building. From, in the building itself, from the new addition, we'll have a sewer main, new sewer pipe coming out here. It shows the new sewer connection for the office building, as well as a cafeteria, which is gonna be in this section of the addition for that in itself.
Does the addition have any additional sort of uses, bathrooms, kitchens, anything like that?
There is, there is bathrooms to be located in this section that Mike is gonna talk about as far as the building layout goes, in this section.
Yep.
There is a new cafeteria in this section.
And a locker room in there.
In a locker room in this area here, we've got a patio for outside picnic areas or lunch areas in good weather.
And what about new lighting? What's the proposal for the new lighting there?
So we have a whole lighting plan that's coming up.
Yep. Remember, we've looked at a lot of this, but some of these other people here haven't, so.
Yeah, so the next, the next sheet is a landscape plan that shows the proposed trees to be planted starting at the corner of the new addition and running all the way down along the fence.
They're inside the fence line on the property?
They're on our side of the fence, running down to the beginning of the ma- major detention area as well as a lot of shade trees and new tree plantings on the site themselves.
And those trees that are along the fence line there, what are those expected to be as far as size of planting?
So they're two to two and a half inches in caliper in size, so they're larger trees, they're not one-inch or two-inch trees. They're, they're larger trees, two to two and a half inch caliper trees.
And what expected height do you expect them to reach?
Well, there are honey locusts, red maples, and oaks.
Big trees.
So they're big trees, they're mature trees.
Yeah.
That are all fifty to sixty feet tall.
Yeah.
When they, when they reach their maturity. So they're not small.
That'll look nice.
By any means. Yeah, also the landscape plan shows plantings within the rain garden to satisfy DEP's requirement for vegetation within a rain garden itself, so it details all that for that.
Mark, does this require approval from the Conservation Commission for this?
No, it does not.
Okay.
So the stormwater is under your, your review. We filed a request for determination with the Conservation Commission. And they went out to the site, we had site visits. GZA did the, confirmed that there are no wetlands on the property. So we have a determination of applicability from the Conservation Commission, which is in your packet, that there are no wetlands on the property in itself. I'm not sure if the board, when they did the site visit last time, but there is an old, there is a drain line that took the roof runoff and brought it to the back of the property. And the previous plans indicated that there might be some wetlands in that area. There is no evidence meets the criteria for wetlands under the Wetlands Protection Act, both by hydro soil and connectivity to other resource areas. So the commission has issued a determination of applicability that there are no wetlands on the property.
Okay.
So the, the stormwater is with your.
Great.
Your board.
And I have looked at it, and it, it's good, there's no, there's no increased runoff for the two ten- to one-hundred-year storms, twenty-four-hour storm events, so that's good.
For me, that's the stamp of approval that counts.
Right, right, yeah, we've sized everything, so there is no, we have a net decrease in every storm event.
It's very well done.
Great.
And also.
Have you had a discussion with the city engineer?
I have not since we filed the plan.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get comments from the city engineer, unless I noticed.
I, I haven't received any comments yet. One, one thing the project also does is, is that in relationship to this old, the drain line that currently discharges water to the back of the property, it eventually gets into the Lovefield Street drainage system, which is an old inadequate drainage system in itself. So with that reconfiguration, we're handling the stormwater on the site itself as well as taking the existing roof and bringing it to O'Neill Street, which is an upgraded drainage system that has been designed originally when the city did the industrial part for the project in itself. So I had spoken and reviewed the plans with the city engineer on that aspect, and he was very happy that that's gonna really reduce the impact down the road in the future to Lovefield Street Drainage System, which is very old drainage system. The next couple of sheets, or I think the next sheet is a lighting plan, Jeff? No, I'm sorry, construction details. So next is a series of plans showing all the construction-related details. There are three of them, and construction notes in themselves. And then lastly, before I'll turn it over to Mike Burns to talk about the building design and so forth, is a lighting plan, and there's two sheets to the lighting plan. And the lighting plan shows that there is no discharge of proposed lighting from the site off the property. Not only along the rail trail, but along O'Neill Street.
Proposed, just the, what about existing lighting?
And same with the existing, they, they took a look at the existing. The existing lighting. And it's same with the existing. They, they took a look at the existing. The existing lighting is getting removed within the parking lot itself, some upgraded to new LED lighting for the site itself. The existing building only has some wall packs at the entrances. They're all gonna get upgraded to LED lighting, uh, and wall packs that shine down instead of out towards the street or to the lighting property in itself.
Okay, great.
So those are the two sheets that, or the lighting plans, and there's specifications on the LED lighting on the next sheet, which is, uh, the second sheet in the lighting plan itself. So I think we've, um, as far as the lighting goes, we haven't gone overboard as far as adding a lot of light, because they don't need a lot of lighting on the site, and also keeping in mind that, uh, we don't wanna have any light spillage or light pollution to the abutting rail trail or properties, or even O'Neill Street. So with that, and I'll gladly answer any questions after Mike's done, but I'll, I'll leave these up here for you, Mike. Mike Burns from One Development can talk about the building plans that are part of your application.
Thanks. Alright, so I guess, uh, if we could start in the front, on the bottom of the page, uh, just so you understand what's going on in that front office, office area. Currently, there's, uh, yeah. So there's.
I'll zoom in, um, can you just orient us where the, where is the existing building, the, the top of the screen, where's the?
This is the existing building in here.
Okay.
And then this is the cafeteria addition, and then we have a connector on it. Let me, maybe I'll leave this back.
But you're talking about the ob, yeah, there is.
Yeah, so the existing office area is here, but the existing factory, so the plan is to build about thirty-five hundred, thirty-eight hundred square foot office in here. Be served by two individual handicap accessible bathrooms, and provide a room for, for eight, ten, fifteen additional office spaces. And, uh, currently, right now, the existing bathrooms in the facility, for the whole facility, are located right in this general area. So if you could stroll back through the existing factory. So the intent would be now, over on this side, um, this would be the woman's locker room, men's locker room and the break area. So that would give the folks working out on the new addition a space to come, put their clothes down, and also this, uh, bathroom configuration allows for uh, the appropriate distance of travel by building code, and between this bathroom and the bathroom, or by the shipping receiving dock, it, it would easily accommodate well over a hundred employees, uh, both male and female. So if you move, move down a little bit further, or up, I guess. So the existing metal buil-, the new metal building is gonna be, uh, there's gonna be a connector through here, and this will show up a little clearer in the elevations.
Sorry, there's like a, there's like a second delay here on this thing.
So this is the line between the pre-engineered building, and then to eliminate the need to go in and reinforce the existing building for snowdrift, we built the connector in and then built the snowdrift into that portion of the building, to avoid getting in obviously to the existing building. So the new building, the new pre-engineered building will start in line with the, uh, the old mixing room, and then it'll seamless slope back towards Love Field Street and the bike path. So if you could hop to the next sheet, I guess.
And just for reference, so this is, this, uh, area on the, on page right is the exterior?
That's the exterior, and that's where the oxidizer located in Tiananbatt, we'll address, address that portion of it.
Did I mention there's a delay? It's really.
Jeff, you're the worst assistant ever.
No, I just wanna know who gets those two corner offices.
Where would you like to start?
So I just, I just wanted to highlight this bathroom, so this becomes kind of the truckers, not truly a truckers, but it creates an area where guys that are working, and guys are people, employees that are working in this area, don't have to take the time to, to trudge all the way across to go into the, the new locker room, the bathroom area. Alright, so then if you go to, that's a continuation now of the, of the plan, this being the line of, uh, well, the new building's done a little further, but, so here's a compactor dock, two, two loading docks with mechanical dock levelers.
What's the compactor dock?
Pardon me?
What is the compactor dock?
Uh, it's for just their general waste, recyclable stuff, things, cardboard packaging, et cetera.
And the leveller is a lift?
Yeah, it's, no, it's a, it's a mechanical dock leveller. It's at dock height forty-eight inches above the exterior, right.
It's a ramp for access to trailers, that backup, or cubs, that backup.
Alright, so then one more, one more feature in here, this is a modular office. Um, they needed additional office space, so rather than stick building something out in the factory and giving up the area of the square footage underneath this, we did a modular office and set the, the height of the mezzanine at twelve feet with two means of egress. And then one thing I'd like to point out is, um, this is the only egress door on the backside of the building, facing Love Field or, or the bike path. And that's illuminated by a little twelve watt LED light fixture that's required by building code to illuminate the, that portion of the exit. All the other exits and doors, we tried to locate away from that wall, so basically that whole wall is clean and free, free of anything, any other lighting, accessories, fixtures.
And, and is that intended as an emergency exit, or?
It is, because you would have to egress from, if you had to egress from this for emergency purposes, you could go through here, you know, come down and go through here and get right outside the building. Another door here, another door over here. Uh, there's also egress through the locker room to the exterior, and two doors, or one door over on this side as well. So on the elevation, starting from one on the top, so, and, in an effort to be sensitive to, this is, as you're looking from O'Neill Street at the new addition, this would be the cafeteria area. This would be the lower connector below. And then this would be the main factory, which is, uh, got a twenty-nine foot four eve height to get under the thirty feet required by the zoning bylaws. So there's, um, uh, natural light features along, along this wall, and the focus was to put any, any HVAC equipment through the wall only, so we wouldn't be going in the opposite direction from anything on O'Neill Street, and, uh, not on O'Neill Street, but Love Field and the white path. Um, one small wall pack here. Once again, we tried to maintain the, the focus on just lighting the emergency lights. There's really no security issues. Here's the back wall again with the, the single light fixture at the egress door. And, uh, notice that there's no HVAC equipment located on the roof along the length of the building, once again, for sound consideration for the neighbors. Uh, another feature is, this is a foam insulated panel, it's three inches thick. I don't have the specifics on it, but what the sound transmission coefficient is, but it's similar to what, what was used at Chem Metal. It's actually a little bit thicker to comply with the energy code. And, uh, basically, we wrapped the whole building in that, once again, on, on the sides facing, facing Chem Metal and the parking lot and, uh, Love Field Street.
And the purpose of that is for, for what? The three inch?
Is it insulation or sound mitigation?
It's, it's insulation, but it also has the benefit of being as good sound mitigation product, so.
From anything inside.
Actually, it'll contain the sound within the building.
Yeah.
And, and then there's no real ports or access points for it to get out. And then the other feature that you gotta consider is, you know, that eight foot fence is very nice too, but, uh, three hundred and sixty-five foot long, um, twenty-four foot six height wall, blocking any sound coming from the O'Neill Street side, probably be a nice feature for the neighbors.
Great, okay, thanks.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to speak a little bit specifically about the operation as it's set right now, uh, between our Ferry Street location and O'Neill Street, and, um, how the, the two would be melded together with the approval on the expansion. The Ferry Street location right now consists of twenty-two day shift employees, um, and, and right now four second shift employees. The hours of operation at Ferry Street run from five-thirty AM till about eleven-thirty PM each night. Truck traffic, common carriers coming in and out of that facility, that location, on average, six or seven pickups are made each day by an LTL carrier, taking freight away for delivery. Um, on top of that would also be a UPS carrier coming in for picking up. On a daily basis, we have an average of one to two deliveries each day, uh, by common carrier or a local vendor that would be delivering cartons or cords or something to that effect. The hours of pickup or delivery at Ferry Street run typically between nine AM and six PM, Monday through Friday. On top of the truck traffic that we have with common carriers and such, uh, because of the need to move materials between O'Neill Street and Ferry Street facilities as we have them right now, the company owns a box truck that runs all day, every day, making approximately nine or ten trips each day, moving materials between the plant locations. Um, if we're into one single facility, all of that would go into fair to O'Neill Street, and our truck traffic, our truck traffic would be pretty much nullified. On top of the trips that our company truck makes between the facilities, um, we have supervisors, um, maintenance people, traveling back and forth between the two plants routinely every day of the week, um, which would no longer be the necessity, because everything being under one location. Speaking to the O'Neill Street facility as it stands right now currently, uh, the first shift, we have a total of thirty employees on the, at the facility, fifteen employees which make up the office lab, um, group, and then fifteen manufacturing, uh, fact, manufacturing employees. Um, our second shift consists of nine second shift employees at that operation. Uh, the current hours of operation are five-thirty AM on Monday when the plant opens for manufacturing, and typically we run overnight Friday night into sometime early Saturday morning, about, by five-thirty, we're out the door. Some weeks we might work a, a day less, depending on what the workload, the work demand is. The coating lines are typical operation because of the, the gain that you have in fluidity, if you can keep the machines running non-stop constantly. So we have two twelve hour shifts, five-thirty AM to five-thirty PM and five-thirty PM to five-thirty AM, um, and that's what we do on a, on a daily basis. The lab, uh, lab and office operation, you can expect to see people in there anywhere between six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday. And sometimes we get weekend travelers like myself that pop in there. Um, so that's the current operation that we have, and, you know, by not having to have the facility at Ferry Street to moving things back and forth, it would lend some terrific improvement for our facility.
A quick question about the workforce, 'cause, um, I know based on the square footage, the, there's a significant parking requirement, but it sounds like based on the way the shift works and the actual employees that are there, that you would have no need for anywhere near the number that the bylaw calls for. Can you talk a little bit about how many people at most will be, need to park there on your busiest times?
I'll, I'll do simple math for you. Um, at the current time, if we look at all the first shift, um, employees that are located at both facilities, we're talking about a grand total of fifty-two employees. The second shift employees, um, consist of a total of thirteen employees, so if you add the fifty-two and the thirteen, you got sixty-five. So at the worst, when you have the crossover of the shift, and we do have some different shift schedules and such, you would have the maximum necessity for employee parking, if everybody drove a vehicle, everybody came separately, um, sixty-five vehicles.
Right.
But that's not gonna be typical.
Throw ten visitors in and you're still under the ninety mark.
Right, so you've got, this, this proposal has ninety spaces, it, the, the application at least says the requirement is one fifty-nine, I haven't gone back to check that, but.
Correct.
It certainly sounds like a situation where even the ninety is gonna be plenty.
So yes, you're right. I mean, per the zoning requirements, um, and the size of building and so forth, it would require, without a waiver from the board, a hundred fifty-nine parking spaces, which is, doesn't make any sense at all for their business, plus the environment in the site, to pay all that additional parking lot, uh, which is about sixty parking spaces for. So we took a look, a close look at, uh, the number of current, saying sixty-five, if the facility grows, which it's going to in the future. Uh, that gives us another buffer, um, of twenty-five new employees, whether it be office staff or manufacturing, so that we feel that ninety parking spaces makes sense, um, and we can kinda reduce that and provide more green space within the site itself, instead of making it all asphalt.
And again, I think it's one of these situations where it, it's not public parking, it's not for the general public, so if, if they somehow need a hundred spots, you've got the space and the incentive to put in a hundred, ten more spots, you know, so it's, it's kind of.
You wouldn't cut yourself short.
Right.
Give yourself enough spots, so.
Easy waiver.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
None for me. Thank you.
No, no, it's good, thanks.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
I'm Dave Horowitz, I'm from Tiananbatt. Uh, we've helped the October Company in Adhesive Applications for many years with, uh, environmental compliance support. Uh, I'm a professional engineer and a certified safety professional. I'm joined tonight by, uh, Tim Q-Cab from our Westfield office. Tim's a certified hazardous material manager, and he's been involved in many of the phases of work. Uh, you might recall what we did last time around. Uh, I gave you a brief talk about media streams as they apply to the materials that, uh, Adhesive Apps handles. I'll do the same tonight, if it's okay with you, and if you have questions, feel free to, uh, to fire away. I'm gonna cover four media streams, the first being air, the next being water, then waste, and then chemical management. First on the air side, uh, the facility has hazardous emissions, which are destroyed by pollution control devices. You've heard the word thermal oxidizers tonight. Uh, thermal oxidizer is a fancy name for a big afterburner. Uh, we use basically natural gas to help burn, uh, chemistry that could leave the facility. Uh, the hazardous emissions are controlled via an air permit, which was issued by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. With that, the DEP requires us to report on an annual basis what the chemical usages are, as well as the emissions. Multiple reports also go to the Environmental Protection Agency on behalf of the facility to meet the federal limits as well as the state limits.
Can I, can I just ask about the reporting? So are there sensors that are built into those devices that are testing sort of what's escaping, or do you go periodically into a spot check? How's that done?
Great question. Uh, so as I mentioned, the air permitting mechanism is through the Department of Environmental Protection. When you receive one of those permits, you have to demonstrate via a stack test to actually show that your pollution control device is destroying what it should destroy. I'm happy to report that the facility minimally destroys ninety-nine point three percent of all emissions from the facility, destroys them, and that's part of the air permitting process.
And that stack test is annually, weekly, monthly?
Uh, it's when you first receive a demonstration from the department. So really, the Department of Environmental Protection says stack test, we'll be there on a Tuesday, and we're gonna watch it when it happens.
And then do they, is there a follow-up, or, I mean, uh?
Yeah, so a DEP representative is on the site, we've got a testing company, typically somebody from Tiananbatt would also observe, and we demonstrate that we can destroy the emissions.
How regularly does that happen?
The frequency of it.
Uh, the frequency of it really is tied to when we have to re-permit. The last time we re-permitted in the case of adhesive apps was two years ago, to go from a line speed of fifty feet per minute to a hundred feet per minute. Uh, during those processes, the department can decide to ask you to demonstrate. In that particular one, they didn't. So I think the last time we stack tested was four years ago.
And then, or, or is it, adhesive applications doing their own testing periodically to make sure this stuff is all working, or how does that? How do you know when it fails?
Sure, so I've got about a seven-page permit there that gives them all the terms and conditions that the facility has to, has to follow. For instance, looking at manometers to make sure we've got negative pressure, to make sure that the mixing room ventilation is going to the thermal oxidizers. I think, uh, Steve or Mike might have mentioned the two coating lines. Emissions from those are captured and sent to the thermal oxidizer for destruction.
Can you repeat the name of the meter you just, a manometer?
Yeah, we're just, we're, we're, we're measuring airflow to make sure that everything's going into the thermal oxidizer and not going out of the thermal oxidizer.
Got it.
And the facility has a great job of having alarms and, and records to, uh, to.
Okay. Harry's got a question.
Yeah, one of, one of the neighbors, uh, I don't know if it was a couple of years ago, whatever it was, they say he woke up one morning and found his whole car covered with snore or something, and stuff was on his front yard and the front porch. What was that, and will that ever happen again?
Well, I'm glad you brought it up. It was item seven on my list, so we'll jump to the front. I think Mr. Schaefer talked about why we're here and why we withdrew the application before. And when we, we drew, we drew it because we didn't feel like we were addressing two issues, one being noise and the other being dust. Uh, that dust comes out of thermal oxidizer. Uh, the facility has spent a significant amount of time and money to improve that situation. Have there been upsets? Yes, there have. Uh, but we've gone to a roughly a monthly cleaning cycle, where we bring in a licensed, uh, waste hauler, comes in, cleans out the facility. hauler, comes in, cleans out the facility, and they've also invested in a baghouse to take out any particulate that might leave during startups.
When was the baghouse put in?
I'm sorry?
When was that put in?
February.
February, wow, excellent.
So it took a while to engineer that, as you can imagine, thermal oxidizers are run at high temperature, these things don't come off the shelf, they have to be custom-built, that process probably took, what, maybe eight months, roughly?
Six or eight months.
Yeah, six to eight months to get that accomplished.
And that was in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for that device?
I think it was 260 or 500 to 68.
And so, I'm sure we'll get to hear from the neighbors too, but from your perspective, has that solved this problem? I mean, have we, have we seen any incidents of, of the ash since then?
Yeah, I would say that it's still work in progress.
Okay.
We're learning how to, we, the group is learning how to run the thermal oxidizers with the baghouse consistently.
Okay.
They've stuck with that cleaning cycle, and they clean on a regular basis to minimize that likelihood.
Okay, Jeff.
I guess, just following that kind of train of thought, did, did you, were you required to get any review or approval by M.A.C.E.P. for those upgrades?
We notified the Department of the upgrade, much like we notify the Department of any changes that would might make. If you're looking at our air permit, for instance, the one that exists today, it talks about three coders. A pilot coder was installed years ago, it didn't really work out, and they've removed it. So it's a great example of the document that you might find online, not quite speaking to what you would see, but safe to say, we've notified the Department of changes.
Okay.
On that note, I might want to talk about noise, I'm guessing?
Sure, that'd be good.
So, again, I'm going to capture that in the air discussion.
Yep.
When we were in front of you last time, there were significant concerns about noise. I'm happy to report that the facility took advantage of an acoustical engineer to come in, do some site assessment work to determine what the noise was. We've helped develop reports on multiple locations. You might recall that the Department of Environmental Protection has a noise policy, which says you can't increase noise at a property line by 10 decibels, it's got to be less than that. I'm happy to report that we are less than that at multiple locations around the facility, and I think that's been substantiated with a recent note you received from-
Yeah, there was, just, just for the record, I'm not going to read the whole thing into the record here, but our health agent did confirm that there had been complaints and issues with the noise, and verifies based on the ambient noise levels that were obtained and the operating noise levels for a couple of different locations and days and nights, that the operation is within the guidelines for increasing noise, so that's good.
Yeah, too, I think she said at the end, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that she's closing her-
Yes.
I forget the exact word, but she's closing her thing on it, she's satisfied.
She's satisfied, yeah, but that, that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that was based on the fact that there was all the new, new silencers installed in all the facilities, all the-
Right.
Improvements, that's, that's how she got, that's how we got to the less than 10-
Less than 10.
Yes, sir.
What would 10 decibels be like? Would it be like a car driving by? What, what, what exactly would that be as far as noise? Could you give some kind of a demonstration or think of something that would be like that?
Not much. You could download noise apps to your cellphones if you'd like to check it out.
No, I'm just, just curious, I mean, I mean, is it, you know, I mean, is it-
I would, I would say my daughter would tell you that my voice is 10 decibels higher than her voice. Typically yelling at her pretty frequently.
It's pretty low, 10 is pretty low?
It's low.
Oh, it's pretty low, okay, pretty low, all right.
By all means, you could probably demonstrate it to see what would happen-
Well, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how low that is, that's all.
There's a sound meter right there.
That's it? It came in here on the top of this, then, obviously.
Just look at the numbers.
You can keep that phone, Harry.
Okay. All right, that's what, it's going to have a sound watch then.
No. No, it's very, it's a-
It's an old phone.
It's a pretty strict standard.
Yeah, it's pretty low.
It's extremely low, yeah.
Somebody screaming for it.
Right now, we're to pick a 93 in this room.
Yeah.
So, and what's important to understand is, in order to get to that point, the facility invested sound barrier dollars, and I call dog houses, meaning covering equipment, done a really good job of minimizing those impacts. So that's on the air side. Spent a minute talking about the water side.
On the noise, I mean, I think there is an important element of having established the ambient-
Mm-hmm.
And then the current operations, and so that was some benchmarks that were eluding the project last time, and I think that, you know, should a special permit discussion go forward about issuing it, I think now there's ambient, there's current operations, and you would have the ability to then establish a monitoring of the expansion as well, so those were things that we didn't have at our disposal for the first round, so I think, I think I appreciate Mr. Schuman's question about what is 10, but it's really relative to something else, and so I think now we have, you know-
What that something else is.
On the record, we have those numbers, and so that was something that will be, that'll be meaningful for talking about, you know, if you grant this, how do you monitor that, and how do you, you know, three months after the new addition is constructed, there's now the benchmarks that are necessary to, to measure against, and so something that wasn't available first round.
Now, as Mr. Schuman mentioned, the health agent had spoken to the DEP about those issues.
Right.
And to establish those numbers, as you said, we've got them in the bank now, so to speak, and we compare them with benchmarks.
Great. Okay, so the water?
Yep, get to it. Believe it or not, when it rains on a facility, the EPA has something to say about it, and the facility does have a general permit coverage for discharge of stormwater. They have to file an annual report with the EPA regarding that stormwater, and it's visually monitored on a quarterly basis. So, at least four times a year, Steve or someone else is out in the rain, making sure that we're doing the right thing relative to water discharge.
And none of the chemicals should be out anywhere where they're getting, contaminating the rainwater anyway, right? I mean, that's, it's all contained inside, other than the 0.7% or whatever which burns off, okay.
And that means it's also like evaluating the rain gardens to make sure they're working properly, is that correct?
Well, that's actually a little bit more to the Massachusetts side, which I can let, I can let Mark and those folks talk to. The federal side has a little different take on it, they're talking about industrial operations-
Water quality.
And limiting what's exposed, so you don't impact water quality. Exactly. On the waste side, the facility is registered both with the EPA and the DEP as a hazardous waste generator. Waste is shipped at least every 90 days, so it never stays in the facility, it's turned around very, very frequently, and reports are submitted to EPA every other year. It's called a bi-annual report, where they've got to notify the EPA exactly what's been shipped out. Lastly, I'll talk about chemical management. On an annual basis, the facility is required to report to the local fire department, the local emergency spot, emergency response commission, and the state emergency response commission on its hazardous material storage. That's a significant, important role that that plays, because it lets the first responders understand what's in the facility. That happens every March 1st. From a toxics perspective, Massachusetts is on the front end of toxic control, there's a toxics use reduction report that goes in every, by every July 1st. Analogous to that, the EPA also has a toxic release inventory that has to be filed once per year. And then lastly, I mentioned that toxics in Massachusetts, the facility has developed a plan to reduce the use of toxics, hiring a toxic use reduction planner to actually brainstorm opportunities to use less chemistry. Want any more questions?
Can you make a quick comment?
Please.
You really were addressing a lot of the things that, that the neighbors brought up last time, which were big concerns for us, and we spent a lot of time on overall. I just want to say how struck I was when I reviewed these proposals, this new plan over the course of the last couple of days, and I'd just like to commend you, sir, it is amazing to me, in my opinion, you've gone over the top, spending a fortune, you know, a lot of money, 300K it looked like to me roughly, put the numbers together, adding in these features. I feel you've been incredibly responsive in, in doing this, from the original proposal to this proposal, in trying to mitigate the, the problems that were mentioned. I've never seen anything like it, and, and I'm glad that your business is in our community, I just want to say that.
Thank you.
All right.
Just to, kind of follow-
Yeah.
Just, what Steve was talking about is the permitting that the EPA and state is separate from the Massachusetts requirements for stormwater management. Within the application, we have a operations and maintenance plan, an O&amp;M plan that would continue after construction with inspections and reports that would be submitted to the city for compliance with that.
The city or the state?
The city. Yeah, with the city, yeah. So that, there's kind of two of the fold, one is-
Yeah.
You know, the, the higher level of the materials within the build, and then the site, which is under the stormwater management policy, and the compliance with that-
Okay.
-aspect of it. We also have a stormwater pollution prevention plan for during construction as part of the application, but we also have an O&amp;M plan for after construction, which deals with inspections, quarterly inspections, like Steve was mentioning about all the stormwater, looking at the rain garden, making sure the vegetation is still viable-
Liable.
And so forth, so, part of the application.
Excellent, thanks.
Great.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the applicant? All right, anybody from the public, comments, questions, please come on up, one at a time?
Good evening, everybody, my name is David Widenfeld, I live at 4 Stanley Street, one of the abutters, and it does sound like you've done quite a lot of work in response to some of the various concerns, I was at some of those prior meetings last year, and I have a few questions, having listened to the presentation, and for one concern in terms of, it was the talk about the dust, which I think there were a few instances of that, what remains a concern, and, and it hasn't been spoken to, so I don't, I'm not quite sure who would be able to speak to it, perhaps you, sir, I'm sorry for the-
Okay, sure.
Okay, for us.
Yeah. Which is the, the odor. I've been working on my house outside over the course of the summer, and so I've been spending, you know, long periods of time, and it was as recently as just this past Friday, that I was out with a buddy working on staining the house upon a ladder, and suddenly, the, the familiar, very sort of, I mean, I can only say the word toxic in the sense of the smell, it's not like a smell like just an unpleasant odor like a paper mill, but more of a kind of, sort of chemical quality to it, this, this smell that descends upon the neighborhood. Certain houses, the, there's, tend to get hit with it, seems to be something to do perhaps with the wind currents, and, and I will say that since that larger stack has been incorporated, that the frequency has, has been reduced, but we still get hit, and it, it's, it's a pervasive, you know, it's the kind of smell, I mean, my buddy was like, "What's that?", and I said, "Yeah, that's the smell that comes out periodically." And so, I, you know, I, I would like it if someone could address that, because that still remains a concern, it's not a particulate matter, but it's, it's very impacting on the quality of life in terms of when that happens, if we're barbecuing or whatnot.
How, how frequently do you think that, that that's been occurring, say in the last year?
I, a little last year, it's hard to say, because I, there are, you know, there are certain days where I'm gone for a good, you know, I leave at 7:00 and not back till 9:00. There have been times when I've come, come home at night and I can smell it in my garage, you know, where I, when I first step out of the car, I don't smell it, and then when I'm in the garage, it's like, so it's clearly happened during the day when I was gone. I would say that over the last, I've, I've probably encountered it, you know, three times over the last two months.
Okay.
And, you know, but that's with, I can't, I don't know what's happening when I'm not around-
Right, sure.
But this is when I've been around.
Yep.
And that, that's to say that, you know, I'm more around on the weekend, so.
Right.
But, it's, yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's just, I, I don't know what more could be done in terms of, I don't know, you know, in terms of the incineration that takes place, if that's, is something in that process, that, but, but something is still being emitted that's, that's, you know, that's problematic for us.
Okay.
So then, I had a question about, in terms of the, the trees, I was going to rent a Lorax suit, to come to say I speak to the trees in the sense that those trees that are being taken out, those trees right now, I mean, from, you know, for all of the months of the year where there's foliage, just create a really good visual barrier, and taking out the whole stand of trees is going to leave us, those of us who live in that neighborhood, feeling like we live in an industrial park. So, I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that there's an eight-foot plan, an eight-foot fence in the plan, of, of course, as was said, it's, it's, it's not really going to feel exactly like eight feet, I, I don't know how much that's going to obscure, it sounds like it's going to do a good job on the lights of trucks coming in and whatnot, because it sounds like it's opaque. I don't know how thick it is in terms of the material, if it's going to do much for sound, if, I don't know if it's really going to do much sound baffling, but it certainly sounds like it'll block the headlights, which is a great thing, and was a, was a concern for us, but in terms of the trees, it sounds like, I, I was looking on the plan, it looked like there were six, six of the 19 trees planned were just going to be along the Lovefield side, and I, I want to raise a question, you know, would it not be possible for there to be perhaps a, a, a greater number of trees, number one, but also, would there be any consideration of the possibility of something along the lines of the avarites, which even in the neighborhood, there are a number of houses that have these, they create an evergreen year-round barrier, I, you know, I, I, I just wonder, because the plants, the trees that we're discussing are deciduous, so that, you know, when they're down, you know, when the leaves are down, it's just going to be very barren there. Avarites, you know, I think you know what I'm talking, these, these large columns, I mean, you see them in many places, that would be a very, I think would be a very elegant solution, because it would really create a very solid, you know, visual barrier, which would preserve the quality of our neighborhood, because that's the thing, I just want to, you know, again, you know, appreciating that, that measures have been taken to do, you know, things that will, will improve the impact, but this is, this is something that, you know, there's, I don't know how many houses are there, I think there's probably at least 20, you know, we're all property owners, and aside from the aesthetics for ourselves, we're talking about our property values, and we're, we're taxpayers too. I know that if, if it just, if we lose that foliage, you know, it's going to feel very different in the neighborhood, and so I just, I put that out for consideration. I can't imagine that the cost differential would be so tremendous, and, you know, this would make a tremendous, this would be a tremendous step towards, you know, further mitigation of any kind of impact on the quality of life and, and the property value, quite frankly, of that entire neighborhood, so, I think that's, yeah, oh, the only other question I had was, in terms of the, the hours of operations as far as backup noises of the trucks, so am I correct in understanding that there wouldn't be trucks backing up to those loading docks earlier than, what, what time would it be that they might be doing that? Want an answer?
Well, why don't you ask your, your questions, then we'll have them come up and answer, so you're, you're curious about backing up and truck delivery?
Yeah, and, and in terms of hours of operation.
Yep.
Because, yeah, okay, thank you very much for taking consideration.
All right, few questions there for the applicant, you guys want to respond? One was the odor, the other was the trees and the avarite, and one was the hours.
Can we get all the questions out, because we could-
Sure, we can do it that way, yeah, that's fine.
Organize and fund all but one.
Sure.
I'm Janice Doppler, I live at 120 Lovefield Street, and I want, I want to start and say that the, the sound remedies that have been undertaken at this point have made a significant difference. I cannot hear the factories in my house when my windows are closed and my doors closed anymore. I can still hear it when the door, when the windows are open in every room in my house, but it's not so loud that it pulls the, my attention to the noise from the factory all the time. On weekends, I don't plan my schedule, my outdoor schedule anymore, so that I do what's outs, outside on Mon, on Saturday and Sunday, so that I don't have to hear the noise while I'm outside, because it's almost intolerable. And I don't, I'm not woken up a couple of minutes after 7:00 every day when the, when the, when the chemmetal factory starts, so there have been, there have been significant improvements. I, and I, I want to talk about, but it's not, it's not perfect, I don't think any more can be done with, with, with what is there now. I have concerns about some, with the impact of some of the proposals, but before I talk about them, I, I want to address what was done with, with the sound study, studies. It's, it's correct that Brianna closed the case, and she closed the case right after getting some written document, some written reports, which she shared with me. And she closed the case right after getting some written document, some written reports, which she shared with me. When I, and I met with her and Jeff, and it sounded like everything was fine, that all of the measurements were under ten decibels more than ambient. And about the question that one of you raised about decibels, I can't explain a lot about decibels. But from one to ten decibels is not as big a spread as from ten to twenty. It gets louder, and so from the difference between one and one-ten and forty to fifty is an enormous difference. So, at any rate, when I, when I actually had time to, after meeting with Bree and Jeff, I went home and I read the studies, and I thought, uh, this doesn't all sound as good as it sounds when you do a superficial look at the data. And I talked to Bree, and I, and I said that I, please don't close the case, I wanna look at this some more. She said, if I close the case, you can, you can re, I can be reopened, or new case can be started. And I said, okay, that would be fine. When I, when I could, I would get to the, to look, really looking in depth. I didn't look at it in depth until today, because I just couldn't bear, this has been so horrible. I just couldn't bear to look at the data and stir everything all up. But what I, but what I read today made me even more concerned about, about the, when I looked at the plan last week. I went, I spent a couple of hours with the, with the application for the, for the addition. And I wanna say first that this, this morning, I laid in bed listening to the sound from, it was six-thirty, and I was listening to the sound from AA, AA. And I was, and then there were cardinals outside my window. And the cardinals were louder than the sound from the factory. But the factory was annoying, and the cardinals, I was wishing there were more. And so, it got me thinking about, about the difference in sound, and why is one sound so annoying, and another sound that's actually louder is pleasant? And that will come back into this in a bit. So, with the sound studies, on November, on November second of twenty eighteen, Acentec reported, and I think I'm just gonna read this, because it'll be more, more organized and concise. November second, twenty eighteen, Acentec reported on a sound study that was conducted July nineteenth to twenty-fifth last summer, twenty eighteen, which included a period to measure ambient noise, ambient noise levels, which were as low as thirty-seven decibels, when there was no factory equipment running. Based on Mass Department of Environmental Protection policy, the community noise not exceed ten decibels over ambient noise. Acentec recommended that noise not exceed forty-seven decibels during the night and fifty-three decibels during the day. The study included recommendations for reduction of sound levels at Chem Metal and advanced adhesives, and most of them have been done, I think. And, but Acentec also reported that the Mass Department of Environmental Protection prohibits tonal sound. And, but they gave, they gave minimal data on minimal, on that, and they gave no guidance beyond definitions. I tried to research what exactly is tonal sound, and I don't really understand, except pure sounds are sounds that it's one, one sound, and the law is that it can't be within certain band, bands. That's as much as, and I don't even know what that means, but that's, but that's what it says. And I think the, I think the cardinal and the other noise that I heard today, I think that's where this comes in. So that was in November. Then in April of this year, Ty and Bond reported on a study that was done just at Chem Metal. It was done, the study was done at the same spot that the Acentec was done. And they're in the V, some of you probably remember, there's a V that points right at my house. And if this is the V, here is where the sound readings were taken. So, Ty and Bond reported on a study on Chem Metal that was conducted Friday, March eighth to Wednesday, March thirteenth. And sound was measured every twenty minutes during those dates on equipment that was located in the spot that I said. And it focused on Chem Metal. And there was an acknowledgement in their report, and this is the written report that Bree gave me. There was an acknowledgement that adjacent facilities are likely to contribute to the monitoring data. And October company concluded that they're in compliance with the Mass Department of Environmental Protection policy based on that report. And at first glance, it sounds like they are. What the report said was that there's, there's an average ambient noise level of forty-two point two when, on a Sunday morning, when all the factory noise was shut. There is an average, average operational noise of fifty-three point, or fifty point three decibels when Chem Metal was working. And then, well, that's the average, average when, when Chem Metal's operating. Then they broke it down to a daytime average of forty-nine point eight decibels during the day, from seven AM to seven PM. Factory actually runs from seven to three. And the nighttime average is forty-six point eight decibels. The maximum allowable is forty-seven, so it's within two point two decibels. And then, the report also said that pure tones, and this is a quote, existed frequently throughout the testing period. And pure tones, pure tones were recorded during both operational and non-operational periods. At the SM one location, that's the name of the spot, the testing spot. At the SM one location, there does not seem to be a correlation between operating times and pure tone conditions. But they defined operating times as when Chem Metal is operating. And all night long, the other, AA operates. So, there's, there's pure tone, they found that there's pure tone, and there are, there are legal restrictions to how much pure tone there can be. So that, they said that that's there, but it's not Chem Metal, but they didn't say that it's the other factory that's right next to it. And when, in the decibel readings, both factories were combined, I mean, so that decibels are decibels wherever they were coming from. But the idea that, that there's an impact from, from AA, I always get to any of that place mixed up, by the metal block. But that was just ignored, totally ignored. We don't know where this tonal stuff's coming from. And so I, I suspect that what was annoying to me this morning was, it's probably a tonal problem, because it's constant, and cardinals are different than that. So, I think there's, there's three, I may have already addressed this, there's three major problems with October company's interpretation of the data. Oh, this, I haven't mentioned this, the daytime average was from seven AM to seven PM, and it includes four hours when Chem Metal's not in operation. So, there's, there's no, they have a, let me read it, it's better. Not in operation, equipment was turned off, the result, this results in an overly low calculation of the daytime average. So it sounds like it's well within the limits, but is it really, since there's this extra four hours in there? I addressed the pure tones. And, okay, so that's, that's addressed. And then, what Bree told me was that this summer, there was supposed to be another sound test done. And that was supposed to have been done previously this summer, and results were supposed to be available in mid-July. I have not seen anything from that. Bree usually lets me know as soon as something's done. So I don't know if that's done. And they were going to change the location, they were going to do it further north of what the, what the SM one location is. I don't, and that was, so that more residents, the impact on more residents would be, no. So, so that's what hap, that's all of the, that's the story of the sound studies. And, and it's not as, sound studies are not as rosy as what we've been led to believe. And because they're not as rosy as what we're led to believe, I have some, some concerns about what they proposed. And in the application, there's a section called, there's a community impact statement. And basically, in the community impact statement, it says there's minimal impact on a community. But the removal of all the trees is a very significant impact, because it's part of the sound barrier. It's also part of, it's also a visual barrier. And yes, there are some invasive plants in there, but there are maple trees, oak trees, sumac, and cherry, and some invasive plants. And so they're proposing to just take them all out. And so that takes out that sand barrier, that sound barrier. The arborvitae that they put in, they're very widely spaced along the whole property line on the Love Field Street. I assume that has to be taken out, because they're right next to the trees that they say they're gonna take out. Their plan, landscaping plan sheet, C six, says they're going to plant nineteen deciduous plants, and they're the ones that were named earlier. So all of that is removing sound barriers. They're going to move the loading dock closer to Love Field Street, so closer to homes. There's going to be the waste compactor that you heard about, that's going to be more noise, new noise. The, the lights with the eight-foot fence is a vinyl fence, actually going to be a sound barrier? Or is it going to be a sound reflector? The baghouse is, the plan is to have the baghouse shielded from view by hemlock trees. But I don't think hemlock trees grow as tall as the baghouse, and part of the noise is from up high, from what I can tell. And it is, it is better with the work that they did on that. The baghouse is much better, and they don't run it all the time. They've figured out that they can run it part of the time, and it still has desired effect. Don't have to talk about that. The other thing that's of concern is that the sides of the factory are going to be metal, and metal bounces sound. So they're taking, they wanna take out all the trees that are part of the barriers and put up metal, which is another sound bouncer.
Can I confirm that point, just for one moment? Did you just say that you were wrapping the entire building in a substance? Is that correct? It's not metal, correct?
It's gonna be a three-inch foam composite panel with an exterior metal skin and an interior metal skin.
Exterior metal skin on the panel, okay.
It's a double-sided aluminum panel with a foam core.
With foam core.
The same panel that's on the Chem Metal building currently.
I know you wanna respond, but I just wanted to make sure I had that in my head. Please continue.
So, so all of that is of concern, is it going to make more sound? And one of the things, this is, this is gonna sound crazy, I know. But Love Field Street is, is the school bus driver training, testing, testing route. And so they practice on it, and they idle, they, the bus is idle exactly where the, where the new, where the new addition is proposed. So if there's, if there's, and they just, they come there, they just sit there, and they play with their seatbelts, and they make sure their signs go in and out, and their lights flash on and off. And there's a lot of them. Yesterday, I saw two from Southern Berkshire School District. So this is all of Western Massachusetts. So if we have metal, a metal-skinned building and noise like that, that's, I worry that that's going to reflect that noise right back, right back at us, and it's already noisy, and then the trees aren't gonna be there. So that's, that's enough with that. Then there's another section in the application that's expansion positives. And one of the things that's mentioned three times is hazardous materials, and you heard some about that today. But a question that I have is how much would, having the addition moved even closer to our homes, how much would that put us in jeopardy if there is an accident? It says in the, in the plan that there's, that there's, it sounds like an extensive plan for what happens if there's an explosion or a fire. Well, this, 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 what, having it, having this extra addition, does that make our homes even more vulnerable? They say that all the ventilation equipment for the addition will be placed on the, on the roof on the O'Neill Street side. So they're planning to have the new addition, but all of the ventilation for the new addition on an old building? And that sounds kind of strange to me, I don't understand why that, is that really true? And then, okay, I've addressed the rest of this. And then the, the fence, in terms of lights, I think the lights are far enough away that it won't, they won't affect my home. But when I think about all of those trees being down, and then having a lit parking lot, just with, with this brown, brown vinyl fence, I worry about what other people are going to experience in terms of light pollution, and you were told tonight that there isn't any. But is that logical, that the lights are, all the lights magically going to stay behind this eight-foot fence? So that's the, that's the concerns that I have and the questions that I have.
Thank you. Well laid out, by the way.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, thank you. I'm Joshua Fowler, I'm on five Stanley. And, excuse me, I just wanna say that the Love Field neighborhood is, it's a gem. It's a beautiful little part of East Hampton. And it is nestled into that little area between the bike path and the Audubon Preserve. And one of the huge draws, I mean, they're modest homes, one of the huge draws of that area is it's quiet, and it is insulated. And that bike trail has a really wonderful break of some native, and you look clearly, as you said, some non-native vegetation. But it does create both a visual and a sound barrier to the industrial park. I'm reiterating what some of my neighbors have said, but it's, it's true. That corridor between directly downtown East Hampton and downtown North Hampton, and all the other places that that rail, that bike trail attaches is a wonderful asset to all of us there and to people in all of the little downtowns nearby. So, really, what I, what I would love to see, and it sounds like the company's working hard to make sure that they're trying to mitigate the effects of the facility on the neighbors. But what I would like to see is more, more discussion on what the visual barrier will be. And also, while I appreciate the work on the environmental impacts that the company has done, that the October project has done, I, it's hard, I haven't even been sung. And it's hard to hear that the environmental impact is a work in progress. Although progress is great to see, I just wanna make sure that, that the odors that are occasionally in the neighborhood, that the dust that comes out of some of the incinerators there, he's a year old. And I wanna make sure that he is not adversely impacted by the business that's being carried out by our neighbors at the adhesive company. So, in short, thank you for the work that you're doing. I wanna make sure that it's sufficient, and that the council has considered it in detail. It's certainly a concern for me, a concern for my neighbors who've already spoken, and honestly, a concern for most of us. There's plenty of people who are interested in coming who couldn't make it tonight. And I just hope that we can maintain, if this expansion goes through, the character of the neighborhood and the safety of the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments, questions? All right, you folks wanna respond? There were a few points in there, but I don't know, who wants to go first?
Well, Jimmy, I'm not gonna do it.
A couple of the folks had mentioned...
A couple of the folks had mentioned odor concerns, and I think you might recall, we talked a little bit about this during the original application. And my quote then is the same quote I use now, "The only thing more fickle than noise is odor," when it comes to trying to identify. So a couple of things, I think it's been three years since we've had an official complaint relative to odor issues at the facility. That said, during that run of time, we went to a very stringent review process where we sent folks out to circle the facility to identify, quote-unquote, odors. I told the story last time, I'll tell it again, I was actually doing one of the inspections in the parking lot. SUV pulled in, the light came down, and the window came down, and it was the permit director from the DEP doing the same thing I was doing. My point of telling you that is, noise is fickle, odor's fickle, you need to understand where it's coming from. We need a better tracking mechanism to have, to have an understanding of what that means. We destroyed ninety-nine point three percent of all of the emissions from the facility. The mix room is connected to the thermal oxidizers, the two coating operations are connected to the thermal oxidizers. It sort of lies in the face of reason that you're getting emissions elsewhere. So we need to, we, we need some substantiation to understand what that means. There is no easy answer, unfortunately.
When you, can you explain a little bit about what the ninety-nine point three percent means? I mean, is that, point seven percent of this is getting released unaffected into the environment, is this, you know, are they dangerous levels? I mean, last time, we sorta went down this path with people saying, you know, is this unhealthy, or is it just annoying? What does that ninety-nine point three mean?
Yeah, so the first thing that folks brought up last time around was the indoor air quality concerns associated with what we call safety, sorry. Indoor air quality meaning exposure for, for folks. If the folks working in the plant are allowed to be there in an eight-hour day doing time-weighted average studies with the, with the emissions, you can only imagine how trivial the point seven percent is that leaves the facility. But, that said, we've got national ambient air quality standards that we have to meet. And that ninety-nine point three, by the way, is the worst of their tests. We conservatively report on ninety-nine point three. Two of the oxidizers did better than that. So the amount leaving the facility is negligible.
Okay, so that air quality of what's being emitted is safe levels of whatever you guys have in there anyways, and that's, that's the requirement?
Ambient air quality standards.
Yep, okay.
That does seem to be contradictory. And I have to, you clearly put effort in and are searching for this, you're saying it's a work in progress, I really believe that you guys are trying everything you have. We have reports that it's still there, and it's real. Is it possible it's someone else?
We've, we've brought that up multiple times, from the sewage treatment plant to the bus company across the street, to some of our neighbors. It's something that you need to spend time because it is fickle. It can't be a one-and-done, unfortunately.
Have you observed the dust when it happens?
And I personally, no.
Yeah, okay.
I've gotten reports back from the facility, we're constantly monitoring what's going on with the system.
I know, 'cause you said you're still, that's still a work in progress, and you're still trying to fine-tune that, I'm wondering if the odor is related to the dust in any way, but I guess, you know, that's something that's still being investigated.
Out of respect, we just haven't had complaints associated with this, we can't really track anything without knowing what we're, what we're smelling, so.
You know, you're doing rebuttals and have a list to go through of what was said, I had one question that's kinda burning on me, and one of the questions, I believe, you asked was about the danger in the buildings, and during the site visit, I had an opportunity to go into the building, and I wanted to confirm a question that I haven't heard asked yet. At that point, when you came before with the older plans, the last set of plans, I should say, the addition that's in the back was not intended for anything other than packing and shipping, and you weren't going to be, the lines you have weren't being moved in there, those chemicals weren't being moved in there, it was more of the finished product being packaged, which is what's currently done on Ferry Street, as I understand it. Is it still your intention that that back section is for those purposes? Or is it now going to include handling the hazardous material?
It's the same purposes as the original permit request.
So none of those stuff are gonna get in there, it's packaging, got it, all right.
You know, it's gonna, we're gonna have cutting machines, but no, no chemicals.
No coating or chemicals, okay.
Okay, thank you for answering.
The coating lines are staying where they are.
Yeah.
Point of clarification.
Okay. Yeah, can you actually come up, sorry, thank you.
Do you want me to stick with the order that I thought made sense?
I'm sorry, I jumped.
No, 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 sorry.
Point of clarification, there will be, currently, we have, as you observed last time, the mixing room and chemical room are all monolithic inclusive, okay? Which is concerning because you're mixing chemicals or you're storing chemicals, all right? All our processing are room, where class one div one, that means the highest level of protection you can have. Over and above that, Mike has spent significant money, we have a CO2 system, we have a sprinkler system, and we have a A triple F foam system in the building. Should anything, catch any type of fire, those systems will put it out, okay? So in this new proposed building, what we're doing is we're gonna take and break the concerns of having a monolithic process in there, and have mixing room reduced where all air is captured there, and we're gonna store closed rooms only in the new building, in its own class one div one area. So that will have foam over and all the fire protection we have in the other room, but it'll be stored away from it, so minimize any chance, there's always a chance, but minimize the chance of having any type of explosion or unexpected event.
When you say they're stored there, the point at which they're filled and sealed does not occur in, excuse me, occur in the new space, they're filled and sealed in another space?
They'll be taken into the existing mixing room, where they are opened, dispensed, closed, and, you know, brought back to the other room. There's no open containers in the new building.
Okay. Can you show me on that map, in the new space, where, if you still have the map, but he doesn't, never mind, forget it, I don't wanna, it's late, I'm good.
It would've been the area to the left of, left of the existing, of the loading docks, the three loading docks, the drive-in door, and it would've been that area.
It'd be adjacent to the current mixing room.
Right next to, if that helps, thank you.
Proceed.
So I was gonna commend Miss Doppler on doing a tremendous job digesting work that we do for a living, and she really did do a very good job. I'm gonna defer to my partner, Mr. Qcap, here to talk a little bit about the pure tones, because it's a subtlety, it's a nuance, and, and again, impressive.
So, when it comes to the pure tones that you addressed, the key, it's much different, not much different, but it's a separate requirement than just a straight-up decibel reading. If you're looking at a decibel, you look at a number, you compare it basically to the ten dB above ambient, and I'm not gonna draw anything and ruin this, but for a visual, best I can without having proper materials, if you looked at the octave band of sound, a pleasant sound that had no pure tones would form almost a perfect semicircle from your low band to your high band, and each of the individual bands in between. If you had a pure tone or an unpleasant tone, at some point in that semicircle, as she alluded to, there's a difference of three or more decibels between the individual band, which would create a scenario where instead of your perfect half-circle, you'd have the half-circle start, and you'd have a jump, and then would come down and resume the half-circle, and that's where you get unpleasant tones and unpleasant sounds. Our study was primarily focused on the decibel portion, as she noted correctly. We do always, as part of these studies, address or evaluate pure tone conditions. What we found in this particular neighborhood was that we were experiencing pure tones that didn't correspond one way or another to the operation of chem-metal or adhesive applications. We were seeing pure tones at conditions when the facility was purely offline, which could be animals, insects, that sort of thing, making those noises. And we saw those same sort of bands in question when the facility was online. So even though there was a statement in the report that said, "We saw the pure tone, we're not gonna think about it," that's not entirely true, it was just we, we couldn't connect it one way or another to the operation of the facility. This is an approach that we discussed verbally with the DEP. The policy in East Hampton referencing the DEP standard is one of the strictest, as she noted, at those lower decibel readings to achieve that ten dB above ambient. Those small jumps while, when you're hearing sound, aren't that significant, it makes complying with a ten-decibel change very difficult and very significant. And our studies, again, spoke with the Board of Health, and we believe that we've complied with the policy as discussed with the DEP and as intended. And there was one item mentioned in regards to sort of daytime and nighttime readings. Those were sort of arbitrarily established by the city of East Hampton, that's not in the policy anywhere. Those were just values that were used as a point of reference, and, and that's really all I can say about that, they, they sort of are what they are, and they were calculated at the timeframes established by the city, as she had requested.
Thanks. I'll just wrap up on the, on the noise side by saying, you know, there's more to do relative to sound mitigation, the building itself, the fence that we've already talked about. And the testing was done while other things were being added to as well, and I think you saw in the application pictures of what they've surrounded the oxidizers with, and used the doghouses to cover. So, you know, we were able to establish the noise satisfaction with the ten dB, yet that was done prior to some of the corrective actions that have already occurred, or subsequently occurred.
Sure, and Russ wanted me to clarify one thing, excuse me. Even though some of the locations on the plans were labeled either chem-metal or in the later plans, adhesive apps, both buildings were running at the same time, that was relative to the location of the sound level meter as it was positioned, just for our internal reference. So the chem-metal location is indeed the location at the V between the two buildings, and the most recent study that we did was much, much closer to the oxidizers to evaluate their noise specifically, sort of in the vicinity, and I don't know if this means anything to anybody, but where the stormwater pipe currently discharges into that area along the bike path. So it was, it was further towards, I'm not, I lived in East Hampton six years ago, I can't remember the street names, but towards the adhesive apps building, or away from the chem-metal building.
What about the comment about whether there was a test scheduled for this summer? Has there been any subsequent testing for noise?
It was performed, yes.
It was?
That was performed between Friday, July 12th to Tuesday, July 16th. We approached the test in the same fashion we had done before, where we shut all, both buildings down completely, all fans, all, and any possible noises were brought offline so we could collect ambient data over the weekend. And then as things ramped up on Monday morning, we were able to see the facility come online and the impacts it had on the noise there. Those results passed with a greater separation between the ten dB than the chem-metal location, and we believe that's attributed to the, the improvements that had been made since that last test was performed.
Okay, thank you.
Before you offload there, since you seem to be the audio expert, there was a discussion that came up, a question about the removal of the trees and the addition of the vinyl fence, and what effect that might have on sound, maybe effect on other things as well, but specifically relating to sound. Can you make any comment as to what you think the effect of that vinyl fence will be to the other side of the fence on sound?
I, I'm uncomfortable doing that only because the noise would not be generated from the facility side of the, oh, you're saying from the noise that the facility's generating.
What effect do you think the fence will have for those on the bike path and on the residential side for having the fence?
I think the greater impact will be the height of the, the building. As it was discussed, all the HVAC equipment will be shielded based on the height of the new building, as well as, if you saw on the, the screen earlier, right now, the location that we performed the test on in July is fully exposed to the oxidizers. The new addition, you know, if this is the oxidizer location now, will actually extend out along the bike path and provide additional shielding. As far as the fence, I'm, I'm just not comfortable making a comment one way or another, but I do believe the building will have a, a significant impact on those values we established, and as you mentioned, provide a good framework moving forward to make sure that we're continuing to comply, continuing to comply with that ten dB condition.
So the building's gonna have a big impact, we're not real sure about the fence or the removal of the trees, but in your opinion, the building's gonna have the most significant?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
All right, can I say something here?
Yes, sir.
You got a second? All right, so on the bottom line here, okay, the very bottom line, in your professional opinion, is the noise gonna stay the same, get louder, or get softer? What's it gonna be?
Noise will decrease in my professional opinion.
It'll decrease?
Yes.
Okay.
Because of the shielding from the new building.
All right, that's all I wanna know, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I think there was a question about delivery times and tree removal.
Trees is a good one.
Yeah.
Is it nine o'clock?
Yeah, we're gonna have to wrap up shortly, but.
The typical delivery times right now would be, with us not having to use our truck to go between buildings, deliveries coming in from outside carriers or pickups being made for removal of materials we're shipping out would be limited to typically between nine AM and six PM.
Okay, so, in the world where this proposal is approved, and people are using those two loading docks, which she's right, are now moved closer to that Lovefield Street, that would be used nine to six?
Those are the hours that are most typical.
Okay.
We do have some customers that run their own trucks.
Yep.
And with us having an operation at Ferry Street right now, that's open until eleven thirty at night, if they showed up at eight o'clock, we would load their truck so they could get back on the road.
Okay, how, how frequently, I mean, I realize you're typically going nine to six, but.
Again, if I said it was once a month, that might not be correct, it might be less than that.
Okay, okay.
It's not frequent.
It's not a regular occurrence.
Most of their pickups are made during our normal hours, but from time to time, they might get behind schedule, traffic, breakdown, whatever.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm really only seeing one potential condition for myself personally at this point, other than, you know, things that you might wanna add, and that's about the trees.
Well, yeah, I wanna hear about the trees, Mark, 'cause this, or whoever's gonna talk about the trees.
Sure. I can look at the tree issue. From our perspective.
I mean, remember, Mark, so we, first of all, we've got, just in our general case, we've gotta take into consideration removal of trees, right? Regardless of sort of this, the baffling for noise and sound or sight, so it's, it's even a tough call, even, even if we weren't having noise and view complaints, so I'm gonna see how we can solve this.
Correct. So I, I guess, sitting there, listening to the butters and requests that were made, twofold, one, I believe that we can take a close look at the existing mature trees in relationship to the proposed development, to see if they can be managed not to be removed. If they're along the boundary line, in close proximity to the boundary line, maybe we can work with saving those existing mature trees that are out there now. My, one of my concerns is, we need to do grading to facilitate stormwater and the building addition, so that we would have to take a close look, and I think it's gonna have to be on a, you know, marking the boundary line and walking it and trying to figure out, we'll fly this tree, we'll save this, we'll put tree protection around it, and to try to minimize any impacts to those trees. The question about a hedge row or arborvitae row, the existing addition plan has some existing arborvitae's that are behind, that run along the back of the existing building. Those could be transplanted back on the site itself, and we could potentially discuss, you know, looking at some infill of some of those additional rows. I think the fence really is a great buffer for not only the headlights, but the activities, so I don't think we would wanna put arborvitae row on the opposite side of the fence, 'cause that's kinda counter-predicted. But where we can look at it is from where the fence ends going towards the north or towards chem-metal, and see if we can, you know, facilitate those trees and maybe doing some additional plantings by transplanting what is there now over, and if need be, discuss, you know, some additional.
So I, I think, I mean, there's no way we can get this done tonight anyways, what I would really like to see is sort of, you know, we've done this in some of our solar projects recently, like you said, like a, a tree census, right? Where you're going along the line and looking at the trees, this we could keep, this we can't, and thinking about, depending on how that shakes out, what you guys are comfortable proposing to sort of help mitigate that loss of trees. I mean, the, the bylaws call for essentially encouraging replacement of trees that have to be removed, I mean, that becomes a problem if you're talking about a sixty-foot evergreen, you're not gonna put in a new sixty-foot evergreen, but that's also more of an incentive for us to not wanna approve cutting down a sixty-foot evergreen, right? So I think to the extent we can think based on what you can keep and maybe work around, then maybe see what that looks like, and then what you might be able to propose to sort of help mitigate in the tree world for that, 'cause I, I think that that's a, that's a hard part for me personally, is removing these trees, that I do think serve a pretty big purpose, besides the fact that we're just removing trees, which I think we're trying to discourage if we can. Jeff?
Couple other, just quick observations on, on that same topic, so on, and I apologize 'cause I can't get the computer to pass them there again, but you had shown the proximity map, and you showed Clapp Street, I think what would be helpful is to either, with an aerial overlay or something, to identify where the closest houses are on Lovefield, 'cause it might further direct where we, where the preservation of trees should really be focused. So there is a section, when you're all the way down at the parking area, you know, I just don't know whether there's houses there, but to give a little bit of guidance as to the, the visual impact, I think what's really lacking in the plan is you have the bike path, and you have a property line, and then you have the tree removal, and what there's really, and, and the, the plans show, you know, an approximate boundary of tree cover is really- there's really nothing to help understand which trees will be removed or how big that impact will be. And I think that's where the tree survey or some kind of documentation on, especially the significant trees, I think is gonna be the area of focus.
Well, I think also an evaluation of, I mean, so if you keep this, or say we keep ten trees, but there's so much invasive species that are underneath. I remember when we were out there, we had to walk back to that tree line. We had to cut.
It's bushwhacking through there.
Species to get there. So, once you get, take all those down, the tree, the tree limbs may not start for twenty feet up. So, if you take off all the invasive species, you've got these trees, but the sound's gonna go right underneath it, potentially. So, that may be an evaluation too, what this might look like when everything's cleared out except these trees. Is it really going to provide the benefit that people think it's going to provide?
Yep.
Good point.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right though, Mark, that I think it really needs to be a tree-by-tree kind of analysis for what works with your project, what can work. And then thinking about what we can do to help mitigate whatever tree removal is absolutely required.
Is there anything we don't have yet? I mean, besides this tree?
So, I, I would, since we are going to continue it, I would just check with the city engineer first about the stormwater. But also, Jeff, there's a couple of waivers in here about driveway entrances and stuff like that that, to my untrained eye, seem relatively routine. But sometimes the city engineer catches something there that's more of a concern. But I, other than that, I don't think there's any missing information or any.
Right, I think, I mean, I did have a verbal from the city engineer that he was generally okay with everything, but we don't have it in writing. And if that were the only thing.
I totally agree. I wouldn't, I wouldn't hold it up. I just figure since we are gonna have to continue this now, I think that that would be something I would ask, but.
The thing, the, the item that I just wanted to put on the table for the continued meeting is the idea of expanding, expansion of use or production. So, so I know that we got to a point with the last discussion about how to handle that. And I think what I wanted to propose is coming back with potential conditions for, for final discussion. But I think where, I think there needs to be something is in my notes here. So, I, I think there needs to be a connection to the air, air control permit issued through Mass DEP. So, I think in the future, you know, if there are changes to the operations internally that trigger some significant, and we have to come up with some language, but some kind of significant change to the operations that triggers the Mass DEP review permit process, I think that that's where we need to tie the, the future changes to that somehow.
Yeah, it's fair. I think you had talked last time about adding a third run-in at some point. So, I think it's important to make sure that's, that we address that somehow.
If you do the hypothetical of approving this new scenario with the addition in the current production lines, and that, that may be where we have the benchmark to, to, to be able to utilize that for future increases in, in other activity.
Yep.
You know, that would be the potential reviewable action later down the road. And I think that's something that we don't currently have set up in the permit.
Yes.
Yeah, Michael Pelt. I've certainly seen any number of situations where you're continuing the hearing, which means there can still be public input, where there is a dialogue between the applicant and the board and including any interested neighbors because any communications like emails or draft conditions that go back and forth are matters of public record. And hopefully, we can then come up with a set of conditions that reflects all the technical knowledge that this, you know, whole team has, reflects the board's concerns, and also tries as best we, we can possibly do to address the, the neighbors' concerns. And so, that could be, that could be very helpful. I've certainly seen situations where the applicant even gets involved in the drafting of conditions and sometimes where the neighbors do too.
Yeah, so what we've done in the past, and I think this will be appropriate, is that we can continue this and try to have for our next hearing draft, a draft decision that includes condition language that could be emailed to the applicant in advance. The neighbors could have access to it. And then if we need to put in technical terms or if we need to talk about the actual language to use, there'll be a structure for us to work off of. And I think that that, especially 'cause I, I think we're gonna have to put this out until September.
Yep.
So, there'll be plenty of time for Jeff to put together a draft and be able to circulate that. I say confidently, not knowing how crazy Jeff's life is, but.
Well, and that's where, that's where our team.
Right.
Can, can help. 'Cause certainly in the preparation meetings, and it fits with some of your comments, I've been doing this since the nineteen-eighties and I have never seen a commercial industrial applicant put together a team like this and put this much time, money, and effort. And so, these people, I think, can be a tremendous resource for, for Jeff when it comes to developing conditions and also trying to address the concerns that the neighbors have expressed.
Yeah, I think that's why.
And Jeopardy too, you'd be great on Jeopardy.
Sure, and I think, you know, for, for open discussion, I mean, I think that there would be a draft condition about monitoring noise. So, based on the benchmark data, so I, you know, that's the opportunity of continuing it is that those items can be drafted and then, you know, presented and discussed at the next hearing, the continued hearing. So, I think that's an open dialogue.
And that way also, you won't be blindsided by anything. We can, you can come prepared to talk about whatever the nuances may be on any proposed conditions.
So, what dates did you have in mind, Jeff?
Right, so I did, I think, try to at least alert the applicant this, earlier this afternoon that, so the twentieth would be a normally scheduled planned board meeting, but where there's an issue with achieving a quorum for that. So, what we're looking at is September 3rd or September 17th. And I just wanted to be.
And I'll just give a heads up, the 3rd is the day after Labor Day, if anybody. We will all be here, but in case.
Yeah, and I think the.
Seventeenth, I will be here.
Oh, okay, Chris.
I'll be in London.
The expectation would be to get revised materials and information, you know, minimally by August 29th.
And the 3rd, is that the date we have a solar, or what's going on on the 3rd?
Well, so.
Nothing yet, but we have to talk about that after.
Because the board approved the other project, what's probably gonna happen is on the 20th, someone will need to convene to continue the solar project to presumably the 3rd. It's gonna be what they.
Are you available?
Yeah, of course, yes.
Can I ask this, that this project go first on the agenda for the 3rd? So, I can then leave?
Well.
For the solar project, 'cause I can't redo the solar project.
That's the one just you can myself. Oh, no, that's the earlier date.
The 20th, okay. Are you folks okay with the September 3rd hearing date?
Make the solar first.
Does that work? We can make that work?
You know, from a, from a building point of view, the only thing that you do is, because it's a special permit, you've got a twenty-day.
Yep.
Period of time for Jeff to write his decision. And then there's a twenty-one-day appeal period. So, very quickly, you're into the middle of October before you can start any.
I mean, we can't do before the 3rd. The 3rd is the earliest date. 'Cause we don't have a quorum for our next meeting as it is. So, the question was the 3rd or the 17th?
Well.
The 3rd doesn't look as bad now, right?
It would be the 3rd.
Okay.
The 3rd would work for me, so.
Okay, so let's get that checked off first. Can I get a motion to continue to the 3rd?
It's fine, it's set at six.
I just wanna toss one thing out before we do, and I apologize for throwing a curveball, and I know it's late, but getting some information from the building inspector, I think that's always safe and it's good. He gave a general consensus for it, go ahead. Realistically, getting some language for tying things together, that's a benefit and can help us. We might be able to work out some basic language in the next ten minutes. And that only leaves the trees. Now, that's hard for me because I don't know exactly where those trees are. Personally, the trees coming down, I'm not so worried about. It's more about the ones going up and knowing where they are, you've offered to put some. But I know that they worry you and I care about that. But I just wanna ask, is that all really enough for us to have to continue this?
For me, the trees alone are enough. I think some of the stuff with the city engineer, I'd be okay with. And I would've gone without that if we could've gotten there.
I respect that, and I won't push it off.
For me personally, I mean, it's.
I just wanted to.
I'm just one vote on this boy.
Okay, and I apologize.
That's okay.
All right. So, the 3rd, I make a motion to continue the October company special permit request for forty-one O'Neill Street, map one thirteen parcel seven and seven point two till six PM on the 3rd of September, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, I'll second that.
Hold favor? All right, all right. Thank you, folks.
You're welcome.
All right, hold, hold on, we're not done. Well, you could've said something, I told you.
No, I mean, I agree with the trees too. I mean, I'm concerned with the trees also, but I, I pull a. I knew the trees were gonna be put in there.
Right.
And as a condition, then I say, well, just pass.
All right. Mark, we, we got one more thing to deal with, sorry.
Nope, thank you.
So, as Jeff said, on the 20th, we don't have a quorum. We have to bump solar.
So, I'll show up at six PM.
If you can show up and do your routine.
Push everything, you may as well put us in the basement.
Yeah, and I, you may be solo, 'cause I think as I learned of that, I.
So, I have to show up, turn the camera on.
Remember when you did this before?
And then, and then say, "I hereby continue."